Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, October 14th, 2024. Thanks for joining us here in the council chambers and for everybody watching online. We will start as we always do. If you're able, please join, uh, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome. Thanks for joining us this evening. Uh, Councilmember Carter is joining us from home this evening, and uh, it's a, it's one of the new laws that was actually passed this year that provides council members and other elected officials up to three instances where if, uh, for whatever reason, they can be at a remote.
For whatever reason.
For not for whatever reasons, excuse me, health and medical reasons, excuse me, uh, to join us remotely. And, uh, so that is what's happening tonight, but because of that, we're gonna have to do everything with a roll call vote. And, uh, so we will call the roll to establish who is here this evening. So Safa, if you could do that and we could get that underway.
Yes, Mayor. Carter?
Present.
Mua?
Present.
Loman?
Here. Here.
Rivas? De La Sandro?
Present.
And Nelson?
Uh, Councilmember Nelson is here. I think he's, he's dealing with something. He'll be in shortly, I believe. And I'm here as well.
And Mayor Bussie.
Here. Very good. Very good. So we will be doing, uh, roll call votes for all of our voting this evening, just to let the council know that's where we are at. Our first order of business tonight is to approve tonight's agenda. And on our agenda this evening, under introductory items, we will be introducing new employees. Kim Bergen from our community development office is gonna be introducing a couple of employees. We're gonna have a proclamation for Jeff McCallas Community Media Day. And item 2.3, we're gonna hear from our communication staff about yet another wheelbarrow full of awards that the communication staff for their work done this year. So looking forward to that. Our consent agenda this evening includes 15 items. Councilmember Mua is taking our consent agenda this evening. Item four, under hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, uh, we'll have four public hearings this evening. Item 4.1 will be a public hearing regarding our annual, uh, the CDBG Annual Action Plan and Budget. Uh, item 4.2 is a public hearing regarding rental housing code amendments. Item 4.3, another public hearing, adopting a resolution approving the assessment role. And item 4.4 is a public hearing on city code amendments regarding streamlined development ordinances. Item five, our organizational business, we'll continue our budget discussion this evening, council. Uh, first off, we're gonna start with item 5.1, which will be a discussion on the sewer availability charge, uh, that we've been discussing, SAC discussion. Then we'll get into the budget. Item 5.2, our 2025 budget and rate discussion for our utility funds. And 5.3, our 2025 budget discussion for our community development department. We'll wrap up, as we always do, with item 5.4, our city council policy and issue update, and hopefully adjourn before it's too late into the evening. Council, any questions or additions regarding tonight's agenda? If not, I would move tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. Ms. Mercer.
Thank you, Mayor. Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Rivas? De La Sandro?
Aye.
Nelson? Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries five zero, and we have an agenda this evening. Or excuse me, six zero, I apologize. Six zero. Moving on, uh, we'll start off tonight, item 2.1, introduction of new employees. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have the privilege of introducing new, two new HRA staff. Valentina Abdalov is a HRA program specialist, and she started with us on August 5th. She's currently working on design and implementation of the in-house property management program for the HRA-owned properties. Valentina brings to Bloomington over 15 years of construction, affordable property management, and project leadership experience. And for fun, she likes to read books and go for walks with her family and travel as well. So with that, um, please welcome Valentina.
Good evening, Valentina. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, been here for a couple of months. So far, I love it, and I am just looking forward to working with my teammates on affordable housing initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Next, I'll introduce to you Sarah Abe. She's the new HRA administrator. Sarah was approved by the HRA Board as the administrator back on August 27th. She comes with a master's degree in public policy and social work from the University of Minnesota, and has worked for more than a decade in various local government and nonprofit roles. Most recently, she served as a senior project management for the city of Brooklyn Park, where she successfully oversaw large-scale development contracts, housing and redevelopment projects, and various housing policy initiatives. And her work with the Urban Land Institute's Real Estate Diversity Initiative Steering Committee is particularly notable, and she can bring those experiences to our work here in Bloomington.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Thank you so much, councilmembers. I'm also very excited to be here. It's been a really good experience so far, getting to know the HRA commissioners, and looking forward to getting to know all of you as well. And, uh, yeah, as Valentina said so well, looking forward to working together on affordable housing and other housing initiatives across the city. Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you. Uh, as I do with, uh, new employees, I remind Sarah and Valentina, in, in a lot of ways, you're, you're the face of Bloomington. People will see you and know you and recognize you a lot more than they recognize anybody up here. And so with that comes the, the, you know, the expectation and the, and the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, culture of the city of Bloomington to provide outstanding service to our residents. So thank you for being here tonight. Welcome aboard. Look forward to you getting out and about and, and serving our citizens here in Bloomington. So welcome. Next up is a proclamation, and I'm gonna head down to the podium for this one. Tonight, we have a, a proclamation for Community Media Day, and specifically calls out Jeff McCallas, who was a longtime producer and, uh, and personality at Bloomington Community Access Television, who passed away in March of this year. So, uh, we're put, we put the proclamation together, uh, and combined the two pieces of it, uh, both Jeff's contributions to the city and, and Community Media Day. So this is a proclamation for Jeff McCallas Community Media Day, October 20th, 2024. Whereas Community Media Day is an annual celebration of voices that brings awareness to the importance of free speech and accessible media for all individuals to have their voices heard. And whereas Community Media Organizations provide a means for diverse communities to tell their stories, hear each other's stories, and create new stories together. And whereas Community Media Organizations provide information to the community that is not covered by mainstream commercial media. And whereas Jeff McCallas was a longtime local producer and more than 20-year member of the Bloomington Community Access Television. And whereas Jeff had a deep passion for movies and music, and was dedicated to reviewing movies and hosting a weekly podcast and cable television show, The Cinema Judge. And whereas Jeff understood the benefits of media created by and for the community, and how sharing of ideas and information helps build common understanding and common values within a community. And whereas Jeff was a wonderful and kind human being, who brought much joy, creativity, and valuable programming to Bloomington Community Access Television. And whereas Bloomington Community Access Television plays a vital role in building our community by encouraging conversations about our common interests, increasing discourse around policy issues, fostering understanding of local cultures, and sharing information to improve our lives. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2024, as Jeff McCallas Community Media Day within the city of Bloomington, dated this 14th day of October, 2024. Uh, I, I met Jeff, I think, once or twice, and, and didn't get to know him well, but I know that there were plenty of members of this community who not only knew him well, but knew him very well, and, and understood the work that he was doing, and really appreciated the work that he was doing. And one of them was Janine Hill, our communications guru within the city of Bloomington. Janine, I'm gonna call you up now, and I know you've got some words, and I think we also have a video of Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor Bussie. Uh, and thank you for Jeff McCallas Community Media Day recognition for its city of Bloomington's television and video programming, which includes our public education and government channels. In fact, viewers are watching local programming right now, uh, with the streaming and cable casting of this council meeting. As you just read, Mayor, Jeff was a longtime producer and major contributor to our cable access programming. Jeff also spent the majority of his life in Bloomington, graduating from Jefferson High School and working for TSA at the MSP Airport for more than 20 years. He passed away last March. His brother Tom, originally from Bloomington, now residing in Greenville, South Carolina, is watching tonight along with other family and friends. Tom said, "Jeff was honored to be a producer in his beloved city of Bloomington. His program Cinema Judge brought Jeff immense joy. We all miss Jeff greatly and are so pleased that you have proclaimed this year's Community Media Day in honor of him." Let's take a look at one of the videos produced about Jeff and his show Cinema Judge.
We now have The Cinema Judge!
My show's called The Cinema Judge. I've been, it's about, kind of movie reviews, but basically it's about movie promotion. It says, "Here's the evidence, here's interviews from the stars, clips from the movie, behind-the-scenes images." So people get a well-rounded image of the film before they go and see it, and they, they get the decide to themselves, "Do I wanna see this movie?" The idea of the show came, I was, I was trying to figure out what to do. I love movies, and I go, "Well, I want something simple." And I didn't wanna worry about clothing every day and what have you. And, uh, and a friend, I was talking to a friend of mine, and she says, "Well, why not do like a judge show? 'Cause they're so popular, everybody, you know, there's judge this, judge that." So I said, "Hey, and that way I could just put on a little robe. I don't have to worry about suit and tie, looking good, whatever. You just put on your robe, voila." I was at a Halloween shop, and I ran into an old coworker. He says, "Yeah, he's working for the city of Bloomington at the Cable Access Channel." So I watched the TV, I saw his names in the credit, so I called up and I said, "Hey, come on, I would love to do a show. I'd love to do a movie review show, something to do with movies." And then boom, the rest was just history. I came in, anybody could do a show. I get recognized like, a couple of times, like, like in the grocery store, um, a couple of times on the light rail after Vikings game, somebody said, "Hey, you know, I love your show, me and my family watch it all the time." Like, doing a show at BCAT is top-notch. The best equipment, the best people, great viewers. You can't ask for a better institution, a place. If you have any kind of show idea, it could happen here.
Thank you.
Well, I, I recognized a handful of those clips, and my favorite, of course, was the volleyball scene from Meet the Fockers, but, um, that says more about me, I think. I would ask, uh, if, if you've been in contact with Jeff's family, if you still have the connections, if you could please forward this on to them and congratulate them, and tell them how, how happy and proud we are that, uh, for Jeff's contributions for the city of Bloomington. So thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Item three on our, uh, agenda tonight, item 2.3, under the introductory items, is a rundown of the communications awards won by our communication staff over the past year. And as I said, it's generally a wheelbarrow full, and I know it is, once again, this year. So, uh, welcome back to Janine Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Bussie, and good evening, uh, councilmembers. I'm pleased to present to you, I'm gonna bring this up. Uh, I'm pleased to present to you three national awards from the city, the city of Bloomington received last month for its communication efforts. The City-County Communications and Marketing Association, or 3CMA Savvy Awards, recognize outstanding achievements in local government communications, celebrating creativity, innovation, and excellence in engaging communities. The competition, established in 1988, received a record 1,000 entries this year from across the country, showcasing the best in public information, marketing, and community outreach efforts. This year, the city of Bloomington received three honors, a first-place Savvy Award, along with second and third-place awards, recognizing excellence in connecting with our residents and promoting key initiatives.
We all belong in the city. We all belong in City Hall. We all be-
It's going a little slow. There we go. The Bloomington briefing received, there you go. Maybe we're just a little slow here. The Bloomington briefing received third place in external publications category. The briefing has received 35 national and regional awards over the past 20 years for creatively communicating relevant and community-building information to the public. Judges said, "The design and high-quality photography really make this newsletter shine. The content is relevant and wide-ranging for community members. All goals were met with this newsletter. Nice job." The Notable Neighbor video series earned second place in the regularly scheduled programming category. Notable Neighbor, Notable Neighbor stories amplify our community image strategic priority by celebrating Bloomington residents who have significant personal and professional achievements or positively contribute to the community. Judges said, "I love that this series was taken a step further, and the mayor invited some of those featured to come up during the state of the city. An awesome way to keep the conversation going. The B-roll and audio is well-done on this series. I think the timing of them is perfect. It's a good amount of information, but not too long, where you get distracted and uninterested. Fantastic work highlighting incredible people in your community." Let's take a look.
We all belong in the city. We all belong in City Hall. We all belong in the buildings and the neighborhoods that we live in. We all belong in the schools. So how do we come together in a better way where we can acknowledge each other's cultures, our foods, our languages, our music?
It feels like I have these two new trajectories that are just running parallel to each other, and I don't really know where they're going, but it feels positive.
I want other people watching my video, not just Cambodian people here, but Cambodian around the world. They believe in themselves, and maybe they'd be like, "If she can do it, I can do it too."
The City's Bloomington Forward Voter Education Communications Plan was honored with the first-place Savvy Award in the Communications or Marketing Plans category. The campaign earned the top award for its effectiveness in educating the public about the proposed local option sales tax. Judges said the campaign clearly identified the problem and opportunity, and achieved high voter awareness about the impacts of the tax. The months-long effort to achieve our major goals included: Informing and educating voters about all aspects of the sales tax, and increasing awareness of the three projects, Bloomington Ice Garden, Nine Mile Creek, and the new Community Health and Wellness Center, along with the facility needs, improvement plans, the benefits, and the costs. The city's commitment was to ensure that when voters filled in their ballots, they thoroughly understood the questions. We used all city communications platforms to get the word out, including the monthly briefing, video, social media, and other print and media materials. We held 19 in-person engagement sessions at various events, including our farmers' markets, recycling events, and other community gatherings. We distributed flyers and spoke with community members and answered their questions. Last November, all three ballot questions passed, and there was higher, higher, hot, there was high voter awareness. Only 1.2 to 1.4% of voters left the questions blank, a significant decrease, according to our city clerk, from the typical 5 to 8% who leave questions blank, demonstrating the effectiveness of educational efforts. And election staff and judges reported minimal inquiries about the sales tax questions, indicating that voters felt well-informed and prepared. Judges praised the campaign's strong understanding of the target audience, comprehensive communication strategies, and effective use of digital media and branding. They concluded their comments with "Great job." In all, the money spent on the educational effort was only 0.04% of a $155 million investment in our community, a fantastic return on investment. There were many staff involved in the Bloomington Forward initiative to get the word out about the projects and the potential funding source. A very special thanks to former Community Services Director Diane Kirby, who led the effort. Her leadership was instrumental in the success of our communications, outreach, and engagement. And thanks to Public Health Administrator Nick Kelly and Community Outreach and Engagement Manager, Eric Holt House and his teams. I would also like to recognize the tremendous amount of effort by Parks and Recreation Director Ann Catry and her team, Public Works Engineering Bob Simons, along with many other public work staff and volunteers. And of course, a big thanks and congratulations to communication staff for their extraordinary efforts to inform and engage the public. And finally, we added these national awards to the 10 awards Bloomington Communications received from the Minnesota Association of Government Communicators earlier this year that City Manager Jamie Verbrugge highlighted at a council meeting in July. In MAGC's contest, Bloomington received four First Place Northern Lights Awards, four Silver Awards, and a Bronze Award, and I am extremely proud and honored to have received MAGC's Lifetime Achievement Award. Thank you, Mayor Bussie and City Council members, for allowing me to showcase our communications and our recognition, recognition this year.
Well, thank you, Janine, and thank you to all the members of the communication staff and the rest of the city staff, who, as you mentioned, play a large role in a lot of what we do and what you do in terms of trying to get the word out, trying to make sure it all works. Uh, so council, when, uh, shortly after the earth cooled, when I worked at the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, I worked in communications, and even then, the city of Bloomington was like the gold standard in terms of communications across the state of Minnesota and across the, the upper Midwest. And, uh, so it's, it's interesting to see that this isn't just a kind of a one-off or just kind of a blip on the, on the radar screen. This has been happening within the city of Bloomington for 30-plus years, and this outstanding work, and it's great to hear the, the briefing, 35 awards in 20 different, 20 years, I mean, that's incredible. Uh, to think about that, this long-term sustained effort of, uh, not only communicating, just getting the word out, which is the important part about, but doing it in such a way that engages and informs and connects with people, entertains and is, is easy and to look at and is delightful to look at, is just, it says a lot. So congratulations to you. Congratulations, Mr. Verbrugge, on making the communication staff such a priority and moving this forward. Council, good work on, on the commitment to communications that continue around here. Uh, well done. Thank you so very much for the outstanding work that you do. More for the trophy case. It's great to see. We will move on to our consent agenda this evening, 15 items, and Councilmember Mua has our consent business. Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one hold so far. Anybody else? Last call? All right. Um, nothing else, then Councilmember De La Sando will be holding item 3.9, so I will move items 3.1 through 3.8, and 3.10 through 3.15 as stated.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember Loman, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Loman? Nelson?
Aye.
Rivas?
Aye.
De La Sando? Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Uh, the one hold, item 3.9, Councilmember De La Sando.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't really have, uh, a lot of questions about this. Um, I thought maybe I could get a clarification, um, I guess on a couple of fronts. Um, one being, uh, it feels like this, uh, in terms of the overall footprint of the plat, it does not change? It's just within the bounds of the plat, they are making changes to the footprints of each of the individual townhomes. Is that, everybody else is reading on this? Is that the correct way to, to read this?
Uh, this is 3.9, uh, and yes, that, that was the way I was reading it, yes.
Okay. And I see Mr. Markiplier is kinda nodding, okay?
Markiplier is, yeah, nodding as well, so, yes.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Um, uh, so, as we all know, I'm, I'm brought, I decided to hold this largely because I wanted to draw attention to it, just because I know that there's a lot of people within this area, um, who are very concerned about this, remain very concerned about this development. Um, you know, I know, uh, before my time, this was a controversial thing. I know, you know, Councilmember Carter and you, Mr. Mayor, voted not to approve it in the first place, and then we went through a lot of rigmarole, and ended up being sued, and now we're going forward. There's not a whole lot we could do here about it, but given the fact that there's, um, a lot of, uh, interest in the community around this, um, I wanted to hold it just to make sure people knew that the good news is that there's maybe progress happening, and we're actually going to get something built here if we can get this plat over the line, um, which would be much better than the eyesore that it is right now with the, uh, basically, you know, dirt lot that it is. So, um, I don't know if there's a, a, a timeline that we can count on now, uh, for this to actually move forward, given that this is, uh, maybe one of the final steps? Do we, do we know the answer to that question?
Uh, I would look to staff. Perhaps they might have some input for us? Good evening and welcome.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember De La Sando, um, uh, just wanted to provide a little update. From, from what I heard, we're talking with the developer through this, um, yeah, the plat, um, because of the adjustment in their floor plans, they had to come back and revise the plat. Um, so after this, um, they'd be, uh, there's a minor revision to final development plan that's under staff review, um, at this time, that would be approved after plat approval. Um, and then the latest update I got from the developers, they would wanna start construction in the spring. I don't know if there's enough time now as winter approaches and the ground freezes for them to get their foundations in on those units, but, um, spring is the goal.
Okay. And the, the, um, the minor changes that we have here, mostly to footprint, like you said, that doesn't change the overall timeline requirement for this approved project to be underway in a certain period of time. My understanding is there's usually like a year, and then we gave them an extension recently, so they gave them, we gave them another year, is that right? So July timeframe next year?
Um, yeah, Mayor, Councilmember De La Sando, um, so yeah, that, um, extension that was approved recently was for the previous plat, so it was kind of, to kind of cover all of their bases. So if this plat would be approved tonight, I believe the plat has a two-year, um, deadline that they have to record it with the county, um, and then the, um, final development plans, I believe, do have a year from approval, so, uh, kind of theoretically, October of 2025 would be kind of their next, um, deadline for some of our planning approvals.
Yep. Okay. Great. All right. Well, um, at least we've got some more information out there, and it looks like there's some light at the end of the tunnel, so I wanted to make sure that was clear. With that, I will move, uh-
Thank you, Mr. Crowell.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will be happy to move, uh, 3.9. I move to approve the preliminary plat and adopt a resolution approving final plat for Penn Lake City homes, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached in the staff report.
Second. Motion by Councilmember De La Sando, second by Councilmember Mua, to accept item 3.9 on tonight's consent business. No further council discussion on this? Very good. Uh, Ms. Mayor, Meyer. Mercer, one of those names. I was in the neighborhood. I'm sorry, Safa.
It's all good. Carter?
Aye.
Mua?
Aye.
Loman? Nelson?
Aye.
Rivas? De La Sando?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Councilmember De La Sando. Thank you, Councilmember Mua, for, uh, your work on tonight's consent agenda. We'll move on to item four, uh, on our agenda this evening, our hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. And we're gonna start with item 4.1. This is a public hearing to accept the corrected 2024-2025 CDBG Annual Action Plan and Budget. Kenny Niemeyer, our HRA, our Housing and Development Specialist in our HRA is here.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So this'll be a familiar item. Uh, you've seen-
You've seen this action plan before, and tonight, we're considering corrections to the plan. So, I'll just go through broadly. CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, is a funding allocation from the Housing and Urban Development Department. We are one of the few entitlement communities of Hennepin County, which means we receive that funding directly, which allows us to have more oversight of how those funds get utilized. All the funds go to serve low and moderate income households. We also partner with the county in creating the consolidated plan for usage of those funds, so we're within the 2020 to 2024 con plan period for CDBG. We'll soon be working with the county on the subsequent con plan for '25 to '29. But tonight, we're talking about the 2024 Annual Action Plan. In front of you is the timeline of steps that have been taken and hopefully will be taken for this plan, so you actually considered and approved this plan back in April 15 of this year. We then received notification from HUD of our actual allocation for CDBG for this year, which was an increase of what we were estimating, and we were then notified in June that we needed to make corrections to our plan to account for that increase, and also, there have been some administrative changes to administrative guidance from HUD on what funding needs to be included in the annual action plan, so I can speak more to that later. We had a new public comment period, which opened on August 30 and closed on October 2. We did not receive any comments during that period. The HRA held a public hearing on October 8, at which meeting, we did not receive any public comment, and then tonight, we would hope to hold a public comment, a public hearing, and then consider approval of the plan for submission to HUD. Once we get this plan approved by HUD, we'll receive our funding and can start putting it toward the programs outlined in that plan. So, for this program year, the 2024 program year, we have an estimated budget of our $475,000 and change allocation, and then we're estimating around $300,000 to come in via repayment of our homeowner rehab loans. So, every year, we get funding, we get funds that come back from repayment of those loans, and we're then able to reprogram that funding as the, as we see fit and as outlined in our annual action plan. I've also called out funding that was identified in the previous plan that you saw, and that's funding that was received in previous years and was allocated for certain activities, but wasn't yet expended. So, in previous years, we've identified that in our plan. We were told by HUD, leave that out. That's money that's already been allocated to an activity, so unless you're changing that previous allocation, then we're not to include it in our annual action plan. So, that is reflected in this budget. You'll see the far-left table are those funds that we've taken out of this action plan, but you'll still see those funds deployed for the activities that they were previously allocated to. So, tonight, we'll be holding a public hearing on the current year entitlement and estimated program income. And with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Niemeyer. Any questions of Mr. Niemeyer this evening? So, I have a question. We've seen these in the past, these come forward every year, obviously. Do we always do a corrected like this? Is there always a need to do it, or did HUD kind of throw us a curveball this year a bit?
Mayor, councilmembers, I can't speak to previous years at Bloomington, but in my experience administering CDBG programs, it's not uncommon to get denials from HUD for annual action plans. This guidance that we received to not include the prior-year funds is new, and that was the main reason for denial. So, if we follow that guidance for the next year, I wouldn't anticipate the need for a correction like this.
Got it. Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing now on item 4.1. Public hearing to accept the Corrected 2024-2025 CDBG Annual Action Plan and Budget. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Ms. Holsman, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak tonight?
Mr. Mayor, there's no one online.
Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Council, no one coming forward, no one on the phone. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1. Second. Motion by Councilmember DeLaSandro, second by Councilmember Muah to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Muah.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Rivas. DeLaSandro.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
And Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing. Council, any questions on this? Anything to bring forward? If not, I would look for action. Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Happy to make that action, but I would say, I thought this was pretty straightforward and didn't need a lot of conversation on it, I guess. We, forgive me, Mr. Mayor, when will the time be that we actually get the annual report from the, from the last year's activities, in terms of how we did with the funding?
Mayor, councilmembers, so our previous year for 20, for the program year 2023, which concluded on June 30 of this year, the CAPER, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, has been submitted to HUD, and we're, I believe we're still waiting for final approval, and we have reported those initial findings to our HRA, so those could be shared with the council, I would imagine.
Great. That'd be great.
Very good.
Wonderful. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution to accept the Corrected 2024-2025 CDBG Annual Action Plan and Budget for Submission and Authorizing Related Actions.
Second. Motion by Councilmember DeLaSandro, second by Councilmember Muah to adopt the resolution accepting the Corrected 2024-2025 CDBG Annual Action Plan and Budget. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Lohman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Rivas. DeLaSandro.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Muah.
Aye.
And Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Niemeyer. We will move on to item 4.2, our second public hearing of the evening. This is regarding Rental Housing Code Amendments. Lynn Moore, our Environmental Health Manager, is with us this evening. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
And then, could I ask you to pull the microphone just a touch closer to you to make sure we can get it all?
So, we're, here's a quick overview of what I'll be presenting on tonight. And we'll start with the code changes. So, we're talking about minor code updates, and they include removing the requirement for state licensed group homes having six or fewer, and they would no longer require to have a city rental license, and this is new under statute, Minnesota Statute 144G. Point 4.5 subdivision 3 that went into effect last May. Also, adopting the current version of the International Property Maintenance Code, which is the 2024 version, it's not a lot different than the 2021 version we're using now. Minor updates to the application process, allowing the housing inspector to make a few reasonable exceptions and extend the application period beyond the 60-day requirement. And lastly, some updates for clarity when assessing reinspection fees and removing some license posting requirements. We, we thought posting licenses was a great idea back in 2014, but it's just not very practical in rental housing, requiring people to put up like our license in a rented house or, so, we're going to take that out now. So, license fees. In 2014, city council discussed and adopted a new rental housing code and a new license fee structure. Over the past 10 years, there have been a couple of 3% across all license category increases that were made, but they kind of demonstrate that fees have increased little and are not keeping up with our budget costs for providing a robust licensing and inspection program. Therefore, two options have been developed for city council consideration. Option 1 would cover about 82% of our projected 2025 program costs, while option 2 is estimated to be very close to fully covering our program costs. And, you know, what does that look like? Well, here's some examples of applying option 1 and option 2. For a 50-unit apartment building, option 1 would result in an increase per month of approximately 57 cents per unit and 93 cents per unit per month for option 2. For a 100-unit building, option 1 increases in the annual fee would result in a 53 cent per month per unit increase and 84 cents per month per unit in option 2. So, those are fairly low. The greater increase would be for a rented house. The increase proposed under option 1 would be an increase of $3.75 per month, and under option 2 would be $5.83 per month. For outreach and engagement, we gathered input on the proposed amendments by mailing postcards to the 1,068 rental licensees, keeping in mind, you know, some licensees have multiple properties. The postcard summarized the proposed changes, directed licensees to the rental housing webpage, where the proposed amendments and fees were our, still are posted, actually, and encouraged feedback to environmental health. Six licensees, all condo or house owners, provided feedback. Five of the six said the proposed fees were too much of an increase and said it would lead to increasing rent. We also applied a racial equity impact assessment tool to review these proposed policy changes, mainly rental fees, and in thinking about this, 36% of all dwelling units in the city have a rental license, so that's all dwelling units, house, apartment, condo, throw them all together, 36% have a rental license. If you look at just single-family houses, 6% of our single-family houses have a rental license. Just to give some background and data, it's clear from the 2022 census data that the city's BIPOC residents rent at a significantly higher rate, specifically Black or African-American at 72.9%, compared to white Hispanic at 11.8% and white non-Hispanic at 28.1%. There are significant income and racial disparities in the quality of housing that impacts health, increases the burden of disease, and negatively impacts economic outcomes. Children are especially impacted by poor quality housing. Positive effects of maintaining a robust rental housing licensing and inspection program through annual inspections, reducing the number of unlicensed rentals, and responding to tenant complaints in a timely manner, really do help hold up our rental housing quality in the city. At the same time, it may create a negative effect, the changes proposed, negative effect on tenants if landlords raise rent. Five landlords have provided comments on the proposed annual license fee increases, claiming that the city raises its fees, they'll have to raise rents and pass it on to tenants. However, you know, on closer examination, it's clear that rental rates are driven by the market, and they have gone up over time while our license fees have not. So, for example, in a house with rent of $2,000 a month, a $3.75 per month increase equates to about 0.19% of the month's rent under option 1. Under option 2, the $5.83 per month increase equates to about 0.29% per month under that option 2. So, when we look at the overall impact of having a very strong, robust licensing and inspection program, it really is there to protect the people who rent and maintain the quality of housing in a city like Bloomington with our aging rental housing stock. So, the next two slides are the prepared motions, and there's a motion for, for each option of fee schedule. The code language is the same, the only difference between the two is whether council prefers option 1 or option 2. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Council questions? Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you, Ms. Moore. Good to be with you again. Just from a clarification perspective, on the first point about changing the regulations associated with licensing, my understanding of reading that was that the city of Bloomington no longer requires a license, but there is still a state requirement that they're licensed. Is that correct? And if, if that is true, then what is the, what is the compliance inspection process for those state-run homes that, you know, that we're no longer, you know, licensing and therefore inspecting?
Mayor, Councilmember DeLaSandro, the state licenses of group homes, they're either licensed by the Minnesota Department of Human Services, that's about 2/3 of the group homes in Bloomington are licensed by DHS, or the Minnesota Department of Health, and that's about 1/3. So, they still, they'll, they'll have a license with them, but it's hard for me to say exactly how they go about doing inspections. I've never been with them on one. Our rental housing program's all about maintenance of the property and safety. I, I, you know, it's hard for me to comment, other than I do know that if complaints are made, I have seen some of their inspections online. It usually relates more to things about behavioral programs and care of clients and things like that. Nothing in what I see from them resembles a rental housing inspection, where we're checking the smoke detectors and the carbon monoxide and making sure all the appliances are working and things are repaired, and there's no peeling paint and things like that. So, it's just hard for me to comment exactly what those state inspections look like.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have one follow-up question to that, then. Does that mean that as, as a city, if we receive a concern from a resident about one of these homes that is now, you know, kind of outside of our jurisdiction, if you will, specifically, what, what does that limit us to in terms of what we can and cannot do? Does it prevent us from doing the same kind of welfare check, for example, we would do on a single-family home or something like that?
Mayor, Councilmember DeLaSandro, it does not prohibit us. So, even like an owner-occupied home, if we had a welfare concern, the city would still have within its authority to investigate, try to make sure that, you know, people were doing well, gain access if we had to through administrative search warrant process, I mean, just other things when you, you know, people's immediate health and welfare are at risk.
Okay. All right, that's super helpful. Thank you for that. That was the only comment, I think, I, I wanted to kind of understand in terms of the general stuff. I don't have any comments on the options at the moment. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for being here, for sending this to us today. So, current fees only cover 61% of our operating for this. Where does the 39% come from?
Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Muah, it comes from the general fund. It comes from all of our taxes. So, if you think about rental housing and, you know, people who are tenants are residents of the city, and it's an important program for us to maintain properties because it maintains property values and it maintains the neighboring property value. So, maintaining this robust rental housing inspection program is very important, and if the council wants to continue subsidizing it with general fund money, I mean, you can do so if so chose.
Thank you. Councilmember Lohman, then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of picking up right where my colleague left off here. So, when we look at the, the fees associated with the housing, can you help me understand how that, that works? Because it seems like the, the housing fee is, you know, at the base, kind of similar to what we're charging at the base for the other fam, the multifamily. what we're charging at the base for the other family, the multifamily units. Can you help me understand? I assume that, you know, we're charging what it costs to do the work, but just help me understand how that can be like that, because I know that folks are particularly concerned in the comments that I saw at the end around how they were being charged for those fees and how that's going to be such a large increase for that population.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, what you're talking about right now, our annual license fee for a house is a hundred and thirty dollars. We do all the houses, all the duplexes and all the fourplexes, every unit, every year. And we put a lot of emphasis in getting into those because it has proven effective in helping people to maintain their units. It might be the only time that year that the owner or property manager gets into those single-family units and takes a look around, and tenants have an opportunity to say, oh, hey, you know, I didn't tell you, but this is broken, and get this fixed. So I think it's very important to maintain that annual inspection. Right now, it's a hundred and thirty dollars. I would tell you that it takes a lot more time and effort to schedule that house inspection than it does a multifamily building inspection. A lot of our large multifamily buildings have onsite staff. They're available, they, you know, they send engineers with us. There's a lot of time taken up with renewing licenses on single-family. They might need a few notices to get back in. And then, like I said, just scheduling that annual inspection does take a lot of staff time, to be honest.
You know, you've raised another question. I got one other one after that, but there was some commentary in there about reducing the fee for folks if they've been doing a good job over a number of years. Could you comment a little bit about that in terms of a way of reducing the overall fee and what you think about that?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, I look at rental licensing, it's a business, right? So people do it to make money. And the city is issuing a business license. Like all other business licenses, we issue them annually. We tie that to an annual inspection, you pass, you don't pass type of situation that we use for rental. It's really hard to say, and we've seen properties be great one year and not so great the next year, depending upon an ownership change, a tenant change, a situation change, a guest of a tenant moving in. It's also about fairness. So if we're going to treat everybody the same and set the standard for everyone, we got to look at every property every year. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. My final question is, you had mentioned about subsidizing these businesses. Do you know what our surrounding communities are doing, just off the top of your head? Is that something that other cities are doing, or subsidizing that?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, you know, we have looked at what other cities are doing that have similar rental programs, our neighboring cities. I didn't include Minneapolis, it's too hard to compare to Minneapolis, but most of these cities are doing a similar type of program as we do. Because there's no state body running rental housing, like, let's say, the food program is run by the Department of Health, where all the programs are pretty similar. In housing, they can be a little different, but I polled cities where I thought the programs were the most similar to ours to compare. And, you know, over time, it's been ten years and we just haven't taken any, we haven't had a reset, so to say. Back in 2014, we had a reset of fees. We restructured the fees, we said, okay, we're going to make this program pay for the services provided. And I feel like we're at that point now where we need a reset, you know, and if a reset is option one, and in a couple of years we come back and talk about an option two, you know, fine. I just think it's worth looking at now and trying to kind of balance the city's cost for providing these very important services and what business owners are paying for them.
So what you're saying on this chart right here is Eden Prairie, for example, that's what it costs for them to get to ninety-nine percent cost recovery, and they're not having subsidy, or am I misunderstanding that?
Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, I don't know what Eden Prairie's cost recovery is. I don't know if Eden Prairie in particular is even doing all of their houses, condos, duplexes every year. Not all of these cities do them every year like we do, inspect. So everything on this chart is a licensed category. We are in every unit, every year.
I guess I wasn't clear then. What I was more so asking was the city's subsidy for, you know, each of these payments. If you don't know, that's okay. It's totally off the top kind of question, so.
Yep, no, I do not have any idea. I did not ask that question. I asked them, what are your fees and how often you inspect?
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick questions. So when we talk about program costs and cost recovery on this, the second option that you provided gets us almost there to full cost recovery. But that is for the program, correct? That does not include other costs of the city that may apply for other public services, police, fire, things of that nature, that may, that they may drive in a way that is substantially different than other types of housing products. Is that accurate?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that is accurate. So when we talk about our program costs, I'm talking about the cost to license and inspect, and I'm including staff time from environmental health, licensing, and some legal. And this chart is about as good an estimate as I can do for estimating next year's costs based on a three-point-five percent increase of salary costs over our current costs. Most of our other EH program costs are pretty steady, you know, the IT charges, fleet, all this stuff. I tried to get as accurate as I could.
Okay. So, and I guess the reason for my question is, you know, I think you noted that there's a large number of rental units in our community, and we, as a council, hear from some of those or from people impacted by some of those well beyond other units. And because these are different than my personal residence or anyone else's personal residence, these are businesses, and there are incentives and disincentives for people to take action on different things. And so I guess my question, and this is maybe more of a legal question, can we also have any type of fee for service? One example I would provide is, I own a business, I have a business unit, and if I have too many alarm calls, and we changed this earlier this year, if I have too many alarm calls, I have to start paying fees, and those fees escalate. Now, you get a couple grace periods, you know, I'm not going to get you on the first one. But we have places that routinely our public services are called to at great expense to the community, at great inconvenience to the neighborhood. Is it possible for us to look at some type of fee for service for those things? Because this is a business. I'm not talking about, you know, slip and fall, someone gets injured. I'm not talking about, you know, someone has a heart attack. I'm not talking about providing basic services that we absolutely have to provide. I'm talking about the other stuff and the other reasons that we get called out, and can we do that to provide incentives and disincentives to provide these services well within our community?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, so, you know, if you're talking about police calls to a property that has a lot of behavior issues, we do have the nuisance service call fee fine, which is a minimum of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The police department on certain properties that they're making a lot of, let's say, behavior-based noise or what-have-you-type calls, they are applying those. So just to reassure you, we use them to an environmental health. The other thing in the rental housing, we do have a rental reinspection fee. So basically, we look at your license fee gets you your initial annual and a follow-up. But if you need a third one because we wrote you orders on your initial and you didn't get it fixed by the follow-up that was agreed upon, and we have to come out again, right now we charge a one-hundred-dollar fee for that third inspection is an incentive. Under option one, we suggest that that fee be increased at two-hundred dollars, and under option two, it be increased to three-hundred dollars.
Okay. Thank you, and I appreciate the information on the other ones. I do still think it's an area that maybe, not right now, tonight, but at some point we look at because we do, you know, in my opinion, I think we get a lot of concerns about a very small number of properties, and what can we do to more incentivize those properties to bring themselves up to the standard of the community and the rest of the neighborhood? The other thing that I want to ask about is, so the legislation doesn't allow us to license under six units, and can you just help me understand? Because in my mind, they're very different licenses. I mean, what we're licensing is the building, we're inspecting it to make sure it's up to essentially maintenance and code compliance, so it's a safe building. They're licensing operations. And can you explain to me why they don't allow us to license the building? And if you can't, maybe that's something we should talk about in our legislative agenda, because they seem like completely different things, and I don't understand the concept of not maintaining, particularly for the most vulnerable people in our community, a decent safe place to live. If we can't enforce a decent safe place to live, then why have any licensing?
You make a very good point, Councilmember. I won't disagree with you.
Don't bother answering.
Ms. Moore, I've got a question. The rates as they were set in 2014, and I was on the council then, but I honestly, that was ten years ago, I don't recall, were the rates set in 2014 to achieve one-hundred percent cost coverage of the program? Or was there, I'm trying to remember if there was a discussion, if we said fifty, seventy-five, sixty-one, I mean, do you recall?
That's an excellent question. I remember that the rates initially were set much higher, and we had a study session about that, and there was a compromise. So I think they were higher, but we backed it down a little bit. I also remember in 2014, because we essentially deleted all of the code on rental in our city code and wrote a brand-new one, like, to really refresh and a new fee structure. We had a couple of hearings outside of council meetings just to, and we had a lot of participation from landlords. I mean, like, fifty landlords came to the two meetings, and we had a lot of feedback that I brought back to council, and at that time, council, you know, compromised and came up with that, those fees at the time, which now have increased, I think, two or three times by three percent over the last ten years.
So just in looking at them and just doing the general math in my mind, it had to be certainly more than the sixty-one percent that it is now.
Yes, that is true.
So closer to seventy-five or eighty, or somewhere in there.
It was probably closer to eighty-five to ninety percent. I, you mean, we, between then and now, we have added, like, one inspector in environmental health. And actually, in the last, like, four years, we've built a lot of apartment buildings. We're really, we're really relying on some intern, like, some temporary seasonal help just to get through our inspections and keep up with the inspection rate we'd like to maintain. So, yeah.
Good to know. Thank you. Council, any additional questions on this? Otherwise, well, let's get to the public hearing if we could. Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. This is a public hearing, and I will call it for item four point two, public hearing regarding our rental housing code amendments. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item four point two? You can come forward, and I'll ask a couple of things of you. Sign in, you can do that after you get done. You don't have to do that right away. But as you speak, identify yourself for the record.
Sure.
And then to let everybody know, as we go through our public hearings here, we have the shot clock on the wall, so you get five minutes, and when we hit five minutes, I will cut you off, not because I'm mean, but because I'm trying to make sure that everybody gets the same amount of time to speak, so.
It's not the debate, right?
No, it is not. It is not. And then if you have any specific questions, what we'll do, the staff will collect all the questions, and we're going to answer all the questions at the end of the public hearing. It's a much more efficient way of doing it, so.
Sure.
Okay?
Well, thank you, Mayor Bussie and all council members. My name is Anne Boy Claire Fahey. We live in Apple Tree condominiums, and we own a rental unit, and we live in a unit. So we have two properties in it. We've rented our rental unit since 2011. It has been inspected every year. I've attended every one of those except one, and I can guarantee you, it's a student intern from college that goes through our condo in literally three to five minutes. That is the inspection. So to hear that it costs a lot, for our little unit, it probably doesn't because it's done so quickly. We keep it in excellent order. Our current owner, our current renters, are minority, and personally, I think this is price gouging. I hear that, you know, you no longer have to give licenses to units in a group home. Well, where's that money that you were getting from there? How is that being passed on? I don't know what those numbers are, but my first reading of this was like thirty, almost thirty percent, or option two, almost fifty percent for a condo increase. I think that's basically too much. Putting that in perspective, I'm a retired registered nurse. My nursing license gets renewed every two years for eighty-five dollars. A whole lot was put into that over forty-five years, but it's a every-two-year cycle, it's eighty-five dollars. And this is a building for three to five minutes, it get, our unit gets inspected very quickly, and it's in excellent order. And thirty or fifty dollars extra is too much. That's my point. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers wishing to speak tonight? On item four point two, the rental housing code amendments. Mr. Coleman, good evening.
Hi, my name is Robert Coleman. I don't have much to say. I just want to say that, I mean, I only just started, you know, I used to live in a home, and now I live with my mom in an apartment, and I only just started paying rent, so take my opinion with a grain of salt. But honestly, when looking at the increase of like fifty cents per month per unit, like, I don't see that as being really that big of a deal. I think that honestly, either option one or option two are perfectly fine to me, but, you know, it seems like really not a lot of, you know, when you look at it at a year-to-year change, like, it does look like a lot, but when you look at it on a month-to-month basis, it doesn't seem like a big difference, especially when you think that it hasn't increased in a reasonable amount, just like, you know, just like the gas tax wasn't touched since 2008, you know? Some things, you know, things, costs go up. I understand that, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anyone else in the chambers? Ms. Holsman, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, there's no one online.
Last call for anybody in the chambers. Council, no one coming forward, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item four point two. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point two.
So much. Second?
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lowman, to close the public hearing on item four point two. No further council discussion on this. Ms. Mercer.
Nelson.
Aye.
Rivas.
Aye.
DeLaSandro.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Muah.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
And Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing on item four point two. So council, thoughts and discussion on this? I mean, where I'm reading this and where I'm standing, and as I said, I was trying to remember our discussion in 2014, where we were, and I don't know if you recall, Councilmember Lowman, but I know our discussions since regarding fees have skewed toward specifically making sure that the fees cover the cost of what we're offering. And this is a bit different because I think there is a, there's an argument to be made for the subsidy if you assume that, yes, this will be passed on, and any increase will be passed on to renters, and it will impact the rent and the cost of housing for everyone, whether it's the top of the income scale or the bottom of the income scale, and will affect them disproportionately. But I will say, the policy examples and the policy priorities that we've set have been that the fees set cover the cost of what we're talking about. ICE rental, inspections, fill in the blank, whatever it might be. We've talked about that. And my sense here is that, is that how, that's how it should happen as well in this housing inspection. inspection. Our housing stock is in excellent shape now. We need to keep it that way, and this is one way that we have control over that, to make sure that our, our landlords, our renters, our, our housing stock in general meets the expectations that we have here in Bloomington. That's my two cents. Others? Councilmember Lohman.
No, thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I think about, you know, you know what you said, and also, I mean, I remember a little bit back of that point in time, and, you know, the folks that came before us and their concern, and let's be honest, I mean, they're going to pass that fee directly to those folks that are there. But, you know, there's a, there's an aspect to this that I think about from a public safety perspective, that I think about these, these numbers, that, that this is part of an investment in making sure that our homes are protected year in and year out, and I think we do need to look at trying to, trying to pay for it now. I mean, I wish there was another way to kind of do this, but, you know, either way, you know, if you subsidize it, you know, from the public sense of it, I guess the way that I would look at this and just finish it off and say this, Mayor, is that I can't have it both ways, right? We're looking at ways in which to reduce our overall levy. This is a way in which to do it. So I, I'm looking at the option number two, and I'm thinking, this is what we got to do. I wish we could spread it out over a number of years, but either way, you're going to pay, you're either going to pay it in taxes on the one way, or you're going to pay it directly in a fee. So either way, you're going to, you're going to pay that tax, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. As I always do, when we talk about these things, I will just disclose that I own a rental unit in the city of Bloomington, so this fee impacts me, I pay it as well, but not uniquely or differently than anyone else, and so that's why I don't recuse myself on it. And what I would say is, I'm sympathetic to the notion that this is a large increase at once, but there haven't been increases over time, and I think within that time period, this is actually a fairly modest increase for the time period since it's been implemented. I, I also hold a, a business license in other areas that is renewed every two years, and, and so I hear you on that, and I completely agree with my colleague here, Councilmember Lohman, that our, and the mayor, that our policy has been, or at least the direction we have given staff, is cost recovery at cost. We're not here to make a buck off you, we're not trying to make money off of having licensing fees or anything like that, we're just providing the service. So I support this as it is right now, but I also at some point would like to take a look at, is there a way to go to every other year on some of these? And, and part of the reason I bring that up is because the other license I hold allows me the opportunity to go into 30 to 40 different people's houses throughout the region, and I would probably say that in 80% of those houses that we go into, because of the building inspection, we have to make sure they have smoke detectors in their house, we have to verify their egress windows, and these are single-family owner-occupied houses that have not met the standards that the rental houses in the city of Bloomington have to meet every single year, and we do that at time-of-sale inspection as well, make sure we bring those things up to code. But the reality is, is we have a much, we probably have much lower compliance on those things in owner-occupied homes than rental homes in our community. Because you know what people do when the thing starts beeping? They pull it down, they take the battery out. I mean, I've literally had, I literally had a nuclear engineer one time.
It wasn't.
Just for vocal clarification. Complain about, I'm like, like, why does it keep beeping? The battery's dead. I mean, this is, this is legitimate. People just take them down and, and get rid of them, and so our rental is, is great. I think our rentals are probably, again, substantially better than what our single-family homes are in many cases, and I would be open to taking a look at going every two years. I think that would help with the cost issue, because it would just lower the cost, because it was every two years, and I think it would still be well within the reasonable amount of safety precaution for our community. So, but that, I'm not advocating tonight, I'm just asking for staff to take a look at that at some point when it makes sense. I support the full cost recovery, that is the direction we've asked staff to go, that's what they brought back, and I, I support that, and I will, personally, I will pay that as, as a person who has to pay it, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Muah, and then Councilmember Delisandro.
Hey, Mayor, I, I am also in line with full cost recovery. I think that's the best thing for the, the city overall, is to make sure that we're covering our costs and ensuring that residents aren't subsidizing businesses and other things as, as much as possible. But to me, the bigger question and concern is just, this is probably the second or third time I've seen our costs not keep up in the time that we've redone things. They've come back in 10 years, and it's not just environmental health, it's other areas in the city where costs don't come up like they should every year, and then we get to this point where it's a huge jump, and people react to it because it's a huge jump. And so that is, my question is, how do we continue to maintain costs on a consistent basis, so we don't have these huge costs pop up on these, at weird intervals, and then we're talking through these, and then in another 10 years, we'll be talking again about a huge cost increase? So that's my question, where I want to see us go, is just more standardized, spread out, so people know what to expect.
I agree, Councilmember Muah. Stick around for the utility funds discussion. So it's, Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I had a similar comment. I was going to actually ask if we could actually plan and do a step-up of these things over a three- or five-year period of time, so that we just gave people a five-year view of what their rental fees were going to be. Maybe that means that this year, between year one and year two, we don't necessarily have to raise it as much, so it makes it a little bit more comfortable, but then over that five-year period, it's really clear what we're, what, you know, what we're trying to hit. So similar to what you were asking for, Councilmember Muah, that was going to be my one comment. To be honest with you, of all the things I heard tonight, the thing that bothers me the most is that we're, we're going to lose some visibility into where I see we have some of the most challenging issues. And I would, I don't know if that's on our legislative agenda, I'll put that on the backburner, and we'll talk about it in organizational business, but, but I worry more about that only because I think, you know, to the point that Councilmember Nelson was making, and to the good work that, you know, Ms. Moore and her team does, I think our owner-occupied or owner, you know, owner-adjacent, like the condo unit that was mentioned by the, the speaker, that those, those are in good shape. And, you know, the rental homes that are around me that have single families in them are in great shape as well, and so that's not where my concern is. So if we could normalize these costs a little bit, maybe give us a five-year plan and, and do that, that would be great, but otherwise, my head's not in that game right now, because I'm so, I'm over here thinking about this other kind of bigger problem. Thanks.
Agreed, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be very quick. I just want to say that I'm in agreement with the full cost recovery increase, and then I like this idea of kind of, you know, forecasting out for the next five years and putting a plan in place so that these business owners can understand, and we have some transparency there in terms of what they can be expecting over the next five years. And of course, if there are years that we're not going to increase for whatever reason, maybe we have lower costs, that's great, but just to kind of build that into our, our system and processes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rivas.
I just have a quick question. Is there any way of reducing our costs so that we don't have to have this large increase? I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see the big picture right now, because I don't have the complete understanding that the rest of my fellow councilmembers have. However, I, if, if we could cut the costs of performing these inspections and whatever is required, we could, we wouldn't necessarily have to have these increases. You know, I, I'm all for what everybody agrees on, we should recover all the costs that we put into it, but at the same time, we can try to do it by reducing, you know, how we get there. I mean, if there is a possibility of doing that, that will benefit everybody, not just the owners, but also the renters in some cases. However we want to put it, any increase in any product out there hurts the consumer. At the end of it, the consumer is what gets to pay for whatever increases take place. Increases in taxes to businesses, we have to pay for it. In any way, shape, or form, we end up paying for it, so the renter will eventually have to get hit with this. And in most cases, the people that are renting is because they can't afford to buy a house, or they don't have the necessary amount of income to, to be buying their own property. So I, to me, is, is there any way, anything we can do to reduce the cost to this?
Councilmember, Mr. Verbrugghe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Rivas. It's a good question, and I'm wondering if Grant in the control room can get us back to the page in the presentation that had the rental housing program costs, the estimated 2025 costs. The question about what we can do to contain costs, this is a service that is very, is very staff-intensive, so most of the costs that have been shared with you are people costs. And we're getting close, clear, Grant? Page 157, I think, maybe it was after the presentation. But as I, as I look at these and I reflect on what Ms. Moore said as part of the presentation, the fact that we've only added one environmental health staff person in the tenure since we last implemented the fees, and the non-people costs for providing this service are essentially overhead costs that are related to IT, that are related to fleet, that are related to space and occupancy within the building, which are formulas that are applied on a, either a per-person basis, or a per-vehicle basis, or a per-square-footage basis. So those, those are overhead, thank you, Lynn, those are the overhead costs. The, the way to control costs here would be to reduce the staffing that's allocated towards it, and then that just gets complicated by the number of units that we have to provide service to on an annual basis and our ability to continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugghe. So council, I, I think we're in agreement regarding the, the cost recovery. I do think we've brought up some points of discussion that we might want to, maybe not tonight, but to, to take a look at. Do we, what would, what would happen if we did this every other year? You know, what, how does it, how does that play out? And that's one way to reduce the cost, is to make it an every other year. How does that work in other communities in terms of, you know, does it work well for them? And, you know, maybe is it a, is it a trial basis that we put it on and see if we see substantial reduction in the quality of the houses or the units from, if we give it a one-year break in between? Things to think about. So I, I do like that as a possible discussion topic in the future, and agree completely with this notion of taking a look at our legislative agenda and opening up this discussion about multifamily care or multi-tenant care units, and because I agree completely that they are the most vulnerable, and to Councilmember Nelson's point, inspecting the business as opposed to inspecting the building, I think it's, it's something that to talk about with our legislative delegation. So, council, I motion forward here. Councilmember Delisandro.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just, do, do we want to put forward option one and option two? I guess is the question I had. I was kind of leaning towards option one, just to kind of minimize it, if we could get to this five-year step-up. I think I heard most people suggesting they would go with option two, so I, I didn't know which one to pick from to put the motion in, unless if Councilmember Lohman has a point of view.
No, I was going to just make sure we mention, to that point, the step-up piece, and I think that's, you know, I think, Councilmember Muah and you, Delisandro, mentioned that idea of stepping it up after this year, having a five-year lookout, and if we do that five-year kind of lookout as a policy discussion thing, then I, then I could support the, the option two, because I think that's a great idea of having that, that idea of having folks.
I, I think the best way to move forward with that, Councilmember Lohman, is that to move forward with whatever motion we decide on with, you know, the, the option one or option two, and then direct staff that we want to look at the step-up and, and actually consider some of these other things as well in, in future. It's been 10 years since we've redone these, and so maybe it's time to, to take a look at some things as well.
Yeah, and I'll be honest, from a, from a levy perspective, I, I'm at the, at the, at the option number two, because I just think that that's what we need to do.
Yep, that's good. All right, Councilmember Lohman, you want to take it?
Yeah, I can take it here, let's see here. I've got it right here with 4.2, and option number two is the second one here or what? The first one? I just say option two, okay?
Yep, when you get to the option with the blank in it, you just say option two.
Okay, so move to adopt an ordinance, updating the rental housing code standards to be consistent with changes in the Minnesota statutes for state licensing group housing, adopting the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code by reference, updating 60-day license application requirements, updating provisions for reinspection fees, removing requirements for displaying current licenses, written notice of change of agents within 48 hours in display of environmental health contact information, increasing license fees for option two, and miscellaneous updates for clarity, thereby amending chapters 14, 15, APXA of the city code.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the ordinance updating our rental housing code standards and increasing the license fee per option two. And all rested, all the rest is stated by Councilmember Lohman very eloquently. Motion and a second on the table, any more additional council discussion on this? Hearing none. Ms. Mercer.
Rivas.
Aye.
Delisandro.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Muah.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you much to staff, thanks for the input, it, it is appreciated, and it's something that we, we, we need to consider and continue to as we move forward. And it's, it's a matter of, I mean, this council's policy and precedent of making sure that we move toward 100% recovery for our fees, and so, so, all right? Thank you.
So you ready for the summary?
Summary publication, Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of ordinance updating the rental housing code standards. Do I need to read this all the way through?
Yeah.
Oh, man, come on. All right. All right, thank you, I need it. Housing code standards to be consistent with changes in Minnesota statutes for state licensing group housing, adopting the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code by reference, updating 60-day license application requirements, updating provisions for reinspection fee, removing requirements for displaying current license, written notices of change of agents within 48 hours, and displaying environmental health contact information, increasing license fees, and miscellaneous updates for clarity, thereby amending chapter 14, 15, and amending A of the city code.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, authorizing summary publication. Any further discussion, council? No further discussion? Ms. Mercer.
Delisandro.
Aye.
Muah.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Rivas.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0 on summary publication. Thank you much, Ms. Moore, appreciate it. Item 4.3 on our agenda, is our third public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, really quickly, are we agreeing to, to provide direction to, to staff on the other stuff? Do you want to do that in organizational business, or?
One, we, we can do that right now, I think that makes good, good sense. Why don't we, as we're done with this, formally direct staff, based on the notes you've taken and, and your memory of, your recollection of the discussion we had on items like stepping up or using step increases, perhaps looking at every other year inspections, looking at different ways to, to reduce costs or, or normalize or steady the costs as much as possible, so we don't have big jumps like we do this year.
Great.
Does that make sense, Mr. Verbrugghe? Okay, very good. Thank you. Thanks for reminding me, Councilmember. Our third public hearing this evening is a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving the assessment roles for 2024, and Brian Hanson and Christian Anago, Anago? Am I saying it right, or Anago?
Anago.
Anago, thank you for correcting me. Civil engineer is with us this evening, good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. We're here once again to discuss the 2024 101 special assessment role this evening, and Christian was going to give a brief background on the project and some information on this year's project, and I'm going to jump in, provide some information on the assessment details, and we'll have some time at the end for questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Christian.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Christian Anago, as Brian stated, civil engineer here at our infrastructure group. So our presentation, presentation today was started by giving out a, a quick recap of the timelines of what, with, what has been happening with the process so far. In October 2018, 2023, we mailed out the estimated assessments to the property owners of the raised, uh, adjacent. of the raised, adjacent properties to notify them of the project coming and, and, you know, the bill to be expected. On October 30th, 2023, and November 11, 2023, we, we held property owner informational meetings to provide information about upcoming project and timelines of construction and things to be expected. And then we came to council on November 13, 2023, to order the project here. And then at various times during construction, we've mailed out notices and, and handouts to inform residents of upcoming, upcoming construction and other, other construction facts. And then in September of 2024, we've mailed out the final assessment to kind of show the final bill here and also held two additional property owner informational meetings to cover closeout items and other things and final schedules. And then, which brings us to today where we're considering the assessment, adopting the final assessment role. These slides is just to go over the PMP program. It was a, a program established in 1991 by council as a way of intentionally and cost-effectively managing our road infrastructure. The philosophy behind it was to take the right action at the right time. It uses an index called the pavement condition index, which gives a rating to the pavement surface. So every year, our maintenance staff goes out and assesses about a third of the CD infrastructure, road infrastructure, and gives it a rating. And that rating is then, is then put in our asset management software, the forecast project for the future years. Once we determine what projects are going for, for each project year, these projects are bid as, as one package because we found that that's the most economical way of going about this. It lowers the assessment for the residents of the adjacent property, properties, and also for the overall taxpayers of the city. Not all properties are born equal, right? And we do apply different rates for these properties. So the single two and three family residential units are assessed at a 25% rate, and all of the properties are assessed at the 50% rate. Next slide, please. So what are the techniques that we use for our PMP program? The first one, depending on where our PCI ends and, and ranges, is a reconstruct, which consists of a, a full removal and replacement of the pavement section. We also install curb and gutter in areas that do not have curb and gutter. And this work is done by a contractor that we hire. Second technique is the less, a little less invasive than the reconstruct, which is the overlay. We only grind off the, the, the top portion of the pavement and pave a new layer. We also do some, some minor curb repairs as needed, and is also done by a contractor hired by the city. The third technique here is a seal coat, which consists in, in the first place of applying bituminous adhesive to the street and then applying a layer of aggregate and sweeping off the excess. And this treatment has the effect of sealing up the top portion of the pavement to prevent water infiltration, because as we all know, water is the enemy of all pavement. It's also, it's done by a contractor as our South Metro Joint Powers Agreement, which is an agreement between, you know, communities in the South Metro and allows us to get a better rate with this type of work. And then finally, we do also PMP trail projects, which is maintenance down to our trail, trail project. So with the trail, you notice that there's no overlay of the trail because the trail sec, sections are a lot smaller, thinner than our road infrastructure. So there's no way to mail that off, so we just remove and replace anything that's damaged. We also do some crack ceilings so that we, we, we seal these cracks. Again, this is done to prevent water infiltration and protect those trails. And this is, this can be done by a contractor hired by the city, but it's also performed at times by our city maintenance department. Next slide, please. So this next slide is just a life cost analysis comparison between two different pavement types. So the first one is a pavement that isn't under the PMP maintenance program. So basically, you can see the PCI that I mentioned earlier. When we build a brand-new road, it's, it's rated at 100. And if no maintenance is done, it's left to deteriorate to the point of needing a reconstruct in fairly quickly. On the right, the, the figure is actually showing a, a street segment that's under our PMP, PMP management program. And you can see that by applying these various techniques at, you know, scheduled time, we can greatly extend the, the, the lifecycle of the pavement and reduce the overall cost. So you can think of the PMP as a, as a, as a maintenance plan, maintenance plan akin to something you have on your car where you do periodical maintenance so that you can reduce your overall cost and you don't have to, I don't know, buy a new engine in a few years. And with that, I'll pass it to Brian to go over our assessment.
Yeah, thank you, Christian. So just some quick background for those who are maybe watching online. Minnesota State Statute 429 is what gives municipalities the right, or the ability, I should say, to levy special assessments for certain improvements. The city's assess, special assessment policy has been in place since 1962. It's been updated multiple times since then. But the basis for the determination of special assessments here in Bloomington is the adjusted front footage. So it equates all lots into recta, as though they're rectangular lots. So regardless of the lot shape, we treat them all as they're rectangular lots. And then based on that AFF, AFF, we multiply that by the cost, the rate per improvement, and that's how we determine the final assessment amount. And then other cities use special assessments as part of their funding as well for certain projects. So we usually utilize this for the reconstruct projects here in Bloomington. So for the 2024 PMP reconstruct project here, the total project cost was just over $7.6 million. This included a lot of work, including surfacing, curb and gutter, utility work. For the project, we only assess for surfacing and curb and gutter work. So those are the only two improvements that are subject to an assessment with this year's project. For the surfacing cost, the total assessed surfacing cost was just over 3.1 million. So to determine our rates, we take the total cost of that improvement, divide it by the total AFF of all the properties that have, are, are subject to an assessment for surfacing. And then we get that 100% rate there, that 14623. So as Christian mentioned, we have two rates that we assess here for here in Bloomington. The single two and three family rate is that 25% rate, which came out to 3656 per adjusted front foot, and then the 50% rates for all other properties. So you see that 7312 is that rate. Similarly, we do the same exercise for the curb and gutter. That cost came in at just over $790,000. You'll notice there's a lot less AFF there to calculate that total AFF for the 100% rate. And that's because in Bloomington, we only assess for the initial installation of curb and gutter. So if curb and gutter is already in place on a street that was part of the reconstruct project, those parcels aren't, aren't assessed for that work. If there's some, there's segments that get replaced with the project, that's included in that surfacing cost. So only streets that didn't have curb and gutter previously are subject to an assessment for that improvement. So again, doing that same math, we have a 25% rate for the single two and three family that comes out to 2569 per adjusted front footage, and then that 50% rate for all other properties is that's 5138. So the, the rates multiplied by the adjusted front footage for each parcel is how that final assessment bill was calculated. I should note at this point, too, that we do do a special benefit analysis before the final rates are sent out. This is to look at all the properties to ensure that our assessment calculations don't exceed the maximum special benefit that property receives from the improvement project. So if we do determine that the assessment rate calculated using our methodology exceeds that special benefit, we adjust the final assessment amount to be in line with that special benefit. And with this year's project, we did adjust eight parcels this year, which is pretty average. Usually we see between, I would say, you know, eight to three parcels a year get adjusted. And most often, those are non-residential parcels. So larger industrial, multifamily and/or open spaces typically what we see that need an adjustment based on the special benefit analysis. And that was the case this year with the eight parcels that were adjusted. So payment options, if the assessment role is approved by the council this evening, properties facing an assessment would have until November 27th to prepay any amount of $100 minimum up to the total amount, and no interest would be applied. So they can avoid paying any interest by paying it off before November 27th. After November 27th, any remaining balance is automatically rolled onto the property tax statement and then spread out evenly over 10 years, the principal is, with that 5.5% of interest applied annually to the declining principal. So if a homeowner did not, or a parcel owner or a property owner did not pay any portion of their assessment, if it were to be levied prior to November 27th, the entire amount would be rolled onto the property taxes, and the first time they would see a bill would be with their May of 2025 property tax statement. And if they're to let that roll out throughout the entire lifespan of the assessment, the last payment they would see would be with their October of 2034 property tax statement. We often get questions about it, can I pay off a portion of it or can I pay it off prior to the end of that 10-year term? Yes, you can, but once it goes onto the property taxes, the only payment options are to pay what's due with that property tax statement and/or the amount in full. The county will not accept partial payments at that point. So if you have extra money you want to put towards that, unfortunately, the county will only accept what's due at that point or the balance in full. So at any point during those 10 years, you can pay off the balance in full and avoid accruing any additional interest. So if you wanted to pay it off after the three years, you would avoid the additional seven years of interest. There is also hardship deferral for those that qualify. So there are some requirements you need to meet for the hardship deferral. So if you do meet these requirements, you know, defer the assessment if it is assessed, does not, is not a forgiveness of the assessment, it's important to point that out, and interest still does apply compounding annually on that deferred, deferred assessment, excuse me. And once that assessment is no longer qualified for deferral, either by someone no longer meeting the requirements of deferral, or the property changes ownership, that assessment becomes full and, or due in full, excuse me. So it's important to kind of understand that. And if someone is interested in, in looking at the hardship deferral and think they might qualify, want to know some more information about that, they can contact our assessing division, or they can kind of give them an idea of what that would look like and what those payments may look like, or that assessment amount may look like if it was to be deferred for multiple years. Lastly, I want to point out there is an appeal process in State Statute 429. So if an assessment is levied this evening and a property owner wants to contest that assessment, there is a process to do so that is done through district court. One thing I will point out is the property owner does need to notify the city within 30 days of the levying of the assessment that they plan to appeal, if that's their, if they would like to pursue that. And the steps for pursuing that are laid out in Section 420, State Statute 429. So with that, just want to summarize, so the PMP program is the right action at the right time. It helps prolong pavement life, as Christian mentioned earlier. It keeps our city's infrastructure in good condition. It maintains or increases property values and reduces the overall cost of the project by doing the right action at the right time. And with that, we have a suggested motion and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Loman?
Just three real quick ones, and I'm not looking for answers tonight, so.
Yep.
Because I, I don't want to put you on the spot. So just as you were going through the, the excellent presentation as usual each year, one of the questions that came to my mind is how many of our roads make it to that 80? Now, I understand that there are different makeups of, you know, aggregate under the roads and different conditions, different kind of things, so that's not fair to say that every road gets to 80. It's just, you know, depending on the, but I'm just curious about that, you know, how many, you know, over, over the years have you noticed that have gotten to that 80, that that 80-year timeframe? Secondly, another question I have is, you know, I've noticed over the years, the utilities, when they cut, cut those out, does that have any impact at all to the, getting to that 80 years? Have you noticed that if the, they have to have cutouts in those? So those are kind of two questions I've had. And then I always appreciated that you put what the 100% assessment would be. I know there, if I remember correctly, Edina charges 100% assessment for this, and we have, in a sense, a subsidy that we provide for certain properties up to, it can be 50 or 75%. And I know, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting this to Mayor, but I think as we look at, you know, these cost recoveries and that type of thing, and I'm not suggesting that we do what Edina does, but I think we, we need to also just make sure that folks are aware of the benefit that we have of living in Bloomington and that when we do these projects, that we as the taxpayers also pick up, you know, from a differing standpoint, that amount over time. And that's, that's an example of where, you know, that cost recovery works in a different, different manner because we see the public benefit of, of being able to provide that because other folks take those roads. So that's it.
Thank you, councilmember. Council, additional questions? We've all seen this presentation, except for Councilmember Rivas. It's, might be your first time you've seen this one, so. Yep. All right. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Don't go far in case we have questions. This is item 4.3, a public hearing, and I will open it now. This is a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving the assessment role 2024-1. This is related to our pavement management program here in the city of Bloomington. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.3 this evening? Ms. Holsman, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, there's no one online.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? Counsel, no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the council chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.3.
So, second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLaSandro, second by Councilmember Muah, to close the public hearing on item 4.3. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Carter.
Aye.
Muah.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Rivas.
Aye.
DeLaSandro.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing on item 4.3. So counsel, any questions on this? Anything to bring forward? Councilmember Loman with some good questions, at least to, to consider, and especially given all of the utility work in the city right now, you, you do wonder, the, the answer is yes, it does have an impact in the overall structure and, and the longevity of the pavement. But it depends on how long, and, and that's why we do some of the work as well. Counsel, anything additional? If not, I would look for action on item 4.3 this evening. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution approving assessment role 2024-1 for the 2024 PMP reconstruction project, Street Reference Segments 1 through 7, 9 through 13.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Loman, to adopt the resolution approving assessment role 2024-1 for the 2024 PMP reconstruction projects. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Carter.
Aye.
Muah.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Rivas.
Aye.
DeLaSandro.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for the presentation as always. It's always actually very informative and it, it's good information and it shows the good work that we do with, for our streets here in Bloomington. So thank you so very much. Our final public hearing of the evening is item 4.4. This is a public hearing regarding city code amendments, especially related to streamlined development ordinance. We've got Nick Johnson, our planning supervisor here, to lead us through this. Good evening, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey. Good to see you all, mayor and members. I'm excited to present this ordinance to you, to you this evening. So now I'll get right into it. So this is just an agenda slide, a quick overview of the content that we'll be discussing this evening as it relates to streamlining development. So in terms of background about this project, as you know, this was an adopted project as part of the 2024 Planning Commission work plan. I think there was a increased emphasis this year on projects that can improve the climate or regulatory environment for businesses as well as improve housing production in various ways. So this is certainly one of those projects that I believe will help in both of those arenas. In terms of why streamlined development, you know, it's, a lot of cities around the country are looking at this, at ways to get out of the way in order to make it easier to do these things that I mentioned. But for the purposes of our project, we defined it in four ways, just in terms of wanting to lower hurdles, lower barriers, in the ways of reducing time, reducing cost, reducing regulatory complexity, and increasing the applicant's confidence that ultimately if they submit an application, that they will get approval for their project. And so these are kind of served as informal metrics for the various content or the ways And so these are kind of served as informal metrics for the various content or the ways that we ultimately pursued streamlining development within the zoning code. In terms of also why to do this, so this effort is very much in alignment with the city's comprehensive plan, both the land use element and the housing element of the comp plan, as well as the city's five-year strategic plan, BTT, most notably about trying to advance equitable economic growth in order just, in terms of just making it easier to get approval. We know that more complex regulatory environments favor groups and entities with more resources, not less or more experience in the arena. So those are just a couple of points about the why. One point I've made at Planning Commission and City Council through this process is that when a city is looking to do this, it's important to note and be on the record about maintaining really high-quality internal review procedures so that you're ensuring compliance with the code, you're bringing all the various different groups together. The Bloomington Internal Review has a formal group, its Development Review Committee, DRC, we meet two or three times a month, involves all of the various subject matter experts from across the organization who have a role in reviewing development. So it's a very rigorous, comprehensive, and quality internal review that ultimately also does not have a cost associated with it. So you can submit a development proposal to the city's DRC, get review comments, and figure out what the right pathway is for you. A note that councilmember Nelson brought up in our study session, I thought was very important, is that we have to do ongoing evaluation on how this is going to go. We mentioned that two thousand nine was the last time that we did this more intentional procedural review. And so I think as we develop or adopt some of these types of changes, it'll be important for staff to continue to evaluate how it's going and make adjustments every so often, not fifteen years down the road, kind of thing. Just a note about the process that we've completed to date, so we've been very deliberate and I, you know, the hours I'll mention here, three study sessions between the Planning Commission and City Council, probably over five hours of discussion just in those three study sessions. And in addition to that, a lot of internal staff hours in terms of the leadership of the Planning Division and other members of the Planning Division, and then casting out that net with our partners in engineering and environmental health and other people in community development to really make sure people are comfortable with kind of the process and ultimately what these procedural steps will be. And so it's been a very deliberative process, and I think it's one that we're proud of. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this ordinance on September fifth. They did recommend approval of this ordinance. And just as a note, the ordinance itself would amend the following chapters on your screen there. So I'm going to provide just a quick summary, a couple of notes I want to make. There's three specific highlights or kind of updates for you since we last spoke that I really want to devote more of my speaking time to. So those are bold on your screen as we kind of go through the summary, but two other points I want to make. So one of the key ways to streamline development is to lower the authority who can approve applications because it just tends to expedite the amount of time and it costs less overall. And so in some cases, that's the Planning Commission, excuse me, in some cases that's staff, if it's a building permit or expanding administrative site plan review. One thing I do want to note, though, is that we've retained all of the abilities or pathways to appeal final decisions to ultimately get some of these applications before the city council if necessary. So I want to ensure everyone that that, that those pathways are maintained. And the other thing, update from feedback we received from the city council was that if application is acted upon by the Planning Commission and the action is inconsistent with the decisional recommendation of staff, in other words, you have two groups reviewing the application who come to different conclusions, that's an automatic trigger to go on to the city council for that reason, to get a third set of eyes on that. So just to note that we are, the ordinance would grant additional decision-making authority to the Planning Commission, but it is subject to appeal similar to some of our conditional use permits that does arise today. So I do want to emphasize that. Just in terms of the summary, so the administrative code provisions would be removed, zoning variance approval authority shifted to the Planning Commission, appeals to staff interpretation shifted to the Planning Commission, certificates of appropriateness shifted to PC, subject to appeal, conditional uses review, so this ordinance, and we'll get into that in a little more detail here in a minute, would change the status of forty-five uses from conditional to permitted on some level. Tent permit extensions, shifting that to the Planning Commission, mural permit appeals to the Planning Commission, the ADU approval process and the two-family dwelling approval process, shifting that to a building permit level decision. Outdoor dining noise mitigation, that's one of our solutions that we want to talk about with respect to outdoor dining associated with restaurants. The site and variance approval authority, again, shifted to the Planning Commission. The expansion of administrative final site and building plan review, final development plans, again, this has to do with site plan review in effect. CUP and IUP approval authority, some application process changes. And then another thing that we're proud of is a reasonable accommodation process within the zoning code in work with our partners in legal. And then just the fee schedule changes that basically effectuate all of these procedural changes within this ordinance. So getting to the key highlights, you'll notice I highlighted three topics on the slide, so this is where we want to get more granular into the details. So the first one is the conditional uses review. So if you recall, through the Planning Commission and City Council study session process, we initially presented a list of fifty-seven uses that we felt were candidates to change from conditional permitted on some level. This exhibit in your packet, exhibit A, lists all fifty-seven of those. Within that, you'll note that some of them are highlighted yellow, and the reason that some of them are highlighted is that through the Planning Commission study session, their second study session, they actually dedicated two hours of discussion to working through every, all one hundred and twelve of the uses that we evaluated. So it was a great amount of rigorous work on their part to do that. And they removed, recommended removing twelve of those uses as part of that initial fifty-seven that staff presented. And so we presented that to you through the discussion with the city council. The decision was made at that time to keep the fifty-seven within the ordinance and the notice procedures, and the reason for that is really to maintain flexibility in terms of what ordinance the city council wants to move forward with. As we brought it through the public hearing process, the Planning Commission did again recommend or affirm their initial recommendation around the forty-five uses. And so I can show you a slide here on the next one of what those twelve uses that they removed were. But it's, I know it's atypical or not always ideal to include multiple options of ordinance in your packet, but we do have option, the main option is the Planning Commission recommended option, and that's again, following their recommendation of forty-five uses. We do have an alternative option B, it has a header that says that on it, so make sure not to confuse the two, but basically the only difference between the two is inherently within those twelve uses, otherwise they're identical. Staff is supportive of both of these options, appreciate the work that the Planning Commission did. I'm happy to answer more questions about the specifics. Here were the twelve uses that the Planning Commission felt it was more appropriate to retain, to designate them as conditional, necessitating a conditional use permit. So I won't read them off the slide, but if you want to return to this, we certainly can. The second issue that we did not have a final resolution towards when we left our study session process had to do with outdoor dining. Staff was wrestling with the challenge that basically all outdoor patios right now are conditional use permit required, ranging from the smallest ones to the largest ones to ones that aren't near residential uses that are, have very little nuisance potential. And so we were trying to think creatively about how to get somewhere where we could have outdoor dining be a flat-out permitted use but subject to some standards that we felt would protect against some of the instances of nuisance that we've experienced in the past. And so we arrived at this solution, and the solution is that staff and Planning Commission would recommend that outdoor dining that's on a rooftop, so rooftop dining would remain a conditional use, similar to drive-through restaurants, for example. And with that, at grade, outdoor dining would be a permitted use, but we're recommending to, in addition to the restaurant use standards, basically that states that a noise mitigation plan would be a requirement if the outdoor dining area had more than sixteen seats and was located within two hundred and fifty feet of residential uses. So it has to be, meet both of those criteria, it's not an or, it's an and. And then just general discussion about, you know, what could be included in a noise mitigation plan? Think about outdoor sound amplification, both locationally and hours of when you do that. Certainly, we've had some outdoor patios that have received some concerns, install baffling or basically noise barriers in certain strategic locations. So there's, there's creative things that you can do to kind of knock down the noise. And the second piece of that, of course, is that the noise code within the city code still is there as the ultimate backup and can pursue enforcement action if necessary as well. So we think this is a creative and good solution that will root out some of the potential nuisance while allowing these outdoor dining areas to just go through a permitted use-type process. Get into the topic of site plan review. So this was another good discussion held at both Planning Commission and City Council. Just as a reminder, the Planning Commission favored the approach of expanding the planning manager's approval authority. City Council, I believe, was supportive of that generally, but also instructed staff to research and look into what it would take to do a full administrative site plan review. And just keeping in mind, you know, many of our applications come with other entitlements or zoning approvals that also require public hearings. And so in those cases, it's kind of a moot point, but you do sometimes have just a final site and building plan application for, you know, a large development, a large commercial or industrial development, or a large multifamily development, whatever the case may be. If the site is owned properly, then they can do that. And so the question there becomes is what is the city's threshold of line of where we should have a public hearing and have more public information and notification? One of the stumbling blocks for us as staff, when we kind of evaluated the, the council guidance with respect to a full administrative site plan review, is that there is also discussion about that notice is also important. And so what we did is we drafted a fully administrative site plan review process, but with notice. After going through it multiple times and exercises with calendars, what we concluded is that to do a full admin site plan review process, but with a notice equivalent to what we do for our public hearings, it still would basically result in a six-week process, which is about equivalent to what it takes to go through Planning Commission at this point. There's also the additional costs about publishing notice, well, you wouldn't necessarily need to publish notice in the paper, but doing a mailed notice increases staff costs and mailing costs and other fees associated with it. So based on the kind of findings at a staff level from this exercise, ultimately what we decided to do in our discretion is present to you an ordinance that expands the planning manager's approval authority in the ways that was supported by the Planning Commission and staff. We can get into the specifics if you want, but it moves the bar far down the field in terms of the size of development that can be proved administratively, but does honor some kind of threshold, if you will, where for, maybe for larger projects, a public notification and hearing process would be more appropriate. So that's, that's what's in there, and it's similar to along the previous lines. And if, you know, if this is successful, I think if you have good development that's larger in scale, but is still under that threshold, I think that that can help build more confidence of a fully administrative process. I guess staff's question about it would be, is the piece about notice? Because that is, does tend to be the aspect that slows things down and does cost a little bit more money, not that it doesn't add value, but just from an expediting or streamlining perspective. The last point, quick, is this is also new information, is that we are recommending a provision that the planning manager for administrative approvals have some discretion to require a public hearing process for projects that don't cross those square footage or dwelling-based number thresholds. The reason being is that there's some types of development that can have large land use impacts or be of high public interest that aren't buildings. Think of an outdoor amphitheater, or a ski hill, or something along those lines that might have large traffic impacts, but wouldn't check the traditional boxes of large-scale development. And so that discretionary piece, while staff sometimes gets uncomfortable with having any discretion, is good just in case, more for the unique project that could come forward that we think is worth more public input. So with that, I have a recommended motion for you. PC and staff both recommend approval of this. Again, the baseline ordinance is the Planning Commission recommended version. We do have the alternative. Staff supports both, and will execute both, of course, but I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmember Dalisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Always good to be with you, Mr. Johnson. A couple of quick kind of items just to set my understanding. First off, for example, with the changes that we made with the administrative review that you're referring to and the, the Planning Commission authority expansion, would the Penn Lake item that I held tonight, three point nine, have actually come to us? Or would that be a good example of something that would have been done and dusted as the, as, as, you know, through the Planning Commission, i- if these were in place today?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Dalisandro, so a couple of things, the actual development approvals that were done, I believe in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, maybe I'm showing my age here a little bit or something, but that certainly would have come to you because it involved a rezoning.
Yes, right. I mean, I meant specifically three.
Yeah, the plat, so the type-three plat still would have come to you. In fact, all plating actions still have to come to you. And so this ordinance doesn't touch the subdivision ordinance in terms of the approvals there.
Okay.
The council, under statute, has to approve plats.
Understood. Okay, that's super helpful. I, regarding use number thirty-one, the taproom cocktail room, it says make permitted but keep limited designation where applicable. Can you tell us what limited designation means?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Mayor. Councilmember Dalisandro, so limited designation means that it is subject to a maximum proportion of the overall development floor of twenty-five percent. And so what's intended there, and maybe it's pretty common in some of our more mixed-use districts, or in some cases, like in districts that are more intended to be office-oriented type zoning, it says that you can have this type of development, but it really should be integrated as part of a component of a larger development where it's capped at that twenty-five percent floor area.
Very good. Okay. I have some other comments that I'll make after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, additional questions? Thank you for making the distinction, Councilmember Dalisandro. Questions versus comments? Other questions? All right. Don't go far, Mr. Johnson. This is a public hearing on item four point four, and I will call that public hearing now. This is a public hearing regarding city code amendments, streamlined development ordinance options, as discussed. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point four tonight?
Hi, Robert Cohen here back again. I just want to give my support of the forty-five and not the, the fifty-seven. It seems like the, of that list of the twelve, those are definitely some things that I, I think it's fair to still want to have some control, a little bit of, a little bit of like policymaking that can happen through the, you know, requiring a conditional permit as opposed to having it just come straight through, especially when it comes with like the, the fuel sales. I mean, I, I used to work at a, a gas station, and there were multiple times where there were, you know, a customer didn't really understand that, you know, if you spill some fuel on the ground, that that's a serious issue. I had one instance where the, it was like, a day that was like negative twenty outside, and so the person did not follow the rule where you have to stay in attendance at the pump. They got back in their car to stay warm, which makes sense, but fuel went like a, almost like eighty percent all the way down to the fuel drain, and I had to rush to get that contained. I, I just think that that is a fair thing to have a little bit more, a little bit more oversight over it in regards to that use and some of the other ones, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anyone else in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point four this evening? No one coming forward? Ms. Tolsmann, do we have anyone in, on the phone tonight?
No one online, Mr. Mayor.
No one on the line? Last call for anybody in the chambers? Counsel, no one coming forward, no one on the line to speak to item four point four. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Rebus to close the public hearing on item four point four. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Carter.
Aye.
Mua.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Rebus.
Aye.
Dalisandro.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing on item four point four. Now the time for comments. Councilmember Dalisandro, do you want to kick us off on this?
Sure, appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I'm generally in agreement, looking at the items that are recommended by Planning Commission to can, to stay as, as something other than permitted use. I would be in supportive of, I think it's option one, which is the forty-five as opposed to the fifty-seven. I think that that makes sense to me, and we can always expand it again if we need to, but this way we're kind of taking a nice bite at the apple and, and then having a chance, per Mr. Johnson's comments, to, to assess that, to watch it operationally unravel, unravel, no, unfold. There we go. I want to unfold it, not unravel it. Let's keep it together, Lona. Literally. But I think that that makes sense, and like I said, we can always come back and we can, we can look at this in another, in another, you know, year or two, or however many that is. I did have one other comment that we can again, take offline, but the Planning Commission currently doesn't have any membership from council on it, and with this massive increase in their authority, does, is that something that we want to think about? I don't, that's not a question to answer tonight, but it's just a, you know, other places where we've authorized this kind of authority, like Port Authority and HRA, we do have council representation. So I throw that out there as something, we may not be allowed to, I don't know if our statutes allow for it or not, so just something that I wanted to throw out there, and we don't have to discuss right now, but it was something that came up for me when, when we decide, if we decide to do this, which I'm generally supportive of. It just, it seemed to be handing off a lot of administrative authority to a group where council doesn't have representation.
That's a, that's a good point, point, councilmember. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Dalisandro, we can certainly look into it a little bit more. Initial reaction is that this body serves to respond to appeals of actions taken by the Planning Commission, and so that probably would suggest it's probably not a good idea to mix the two bodies.
Yeah, just an open question about maybe the process of, of appointment then, or something where it needs to be a little bit more, I don't know, we could talk about it later, but we might want to think about. but we might want to think about how we construct the planning commission, given the additional authority we're offering it. That's all. Thanks.
Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll pick up right where my colleague left off. Yeah, with that whole planning commission, I mentioned a couple of comments before in the last meeting, and I think of staff and Mayor, if you want to look at those to add to what's being said there, but I definitely do think that we need to kind of look at that body itself and try to figure out ways in which to, well, just make sure that they're up to the task. I'll just say that. So then just a couple other items. So then from the, I just had a question about the notification standards of it. One of my questions was, I know that when you looked at those notification portions of it, that I'm assuming that we tried to keep the same standards of notification we do right now by mail. Was there any issue with trying to do notifications in another way? I know that mail is the one that's going to be probably more noticeable, or that people are actually going to look at, but would that decrease, you know, that time span that we're looking at? I know that, I understand the six, six weeks with that. Is there other ways of doing notification that we could kind of do a hybrid?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Loman, I'm not aware of any methods right now that would pass the legal test for notification under Minnesota law.
So are we required to fit that legal notification even though we're taking that out?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, we would not if you're not having a public hearing, and we have a procedure section of our city code that dictates where we establish notice and where we don't, and under statutes, there are certain applications that require notice and some that are more discretionary. And Bloomington does utilize a lot of that discretion to require notice for a lot of our development applications above and beyond state law, but a lot of cities do. That's not out of the norm.
We could have something that's less than a public hearing, right? I mean, I think I've seen before where the mayor's had public comment or something like that instead of that. No, I'm not making any suggestions in terms of changes tonight, but I think that may be a way to kind of get down that pathway of, and maybe my colleagues don't agree, but maybe that's, you know, it's kind of a nice compromise in between, somewhere between having this formal notification that, you know, drags, that has that six week. And I understand that. I'd certainly support notification, and I, you know, that's something I like to see, especially when we have those things out there. I know that's, I'm one of those people, but I'm just trying to figure out a different way to kind of advocate for a compromise. The last thing I'll say is, you know, for myself, you know, I can understand if council is there and they want to kind of hold back on, you know, on these 12 items here, and certainly I could pull other items off the list and slide them in here, but I think I'm at a point where I'm ready to do the 57. I mean, I said that the last time, so that's probably no surprise. And the rationale is that I really would like to see our council really try to get ourselves in the position of really looking at policy and trying to drive that policy forward and kind of letting some of these more administrative things, kind of let planning commission kind of deal with those things and let staff kind of deal with those things, so we can really kind of get ahead and really, because, you know, I look back, you know, at our last meeting, and we look at the Penn and American project, and I think about, wouldn't it be nice if we would have had the time, you know, as this council, by kind of downgrading some of these items here to have that second look at that Penn and American, you know, because we have, you know, essentially a new council now with different ways of looking at those things. And so I think if it's trading in some of those items, some of these 12 items, to kind of look at some of those other policy proposals, that's sort of my rationale as to why I want to do the 57. I can understand why we want to have some oversight over these 12 for the next couple of years, but I'd like to see us get rid of these 12 items and kind of get to resolution as soon as possible so we can continue to kind of be out front and be proactive when it comes to our overall neighborhood policies and any other policies when it comes to planning. Thank you, Mayor.
And Councilmember, Councilmember Rivas. Councilmember, can you turn your mic on, please?
I just can't understand how, as a council, we're going to give up the oversight. I just can't comprehend it. I mean, the more I think about it, it is a good idea to expedite businesses and stuff. However, giving up the oversight, I just can't really get it into my, my little brain to understand it. I think for whatever city staff do, for the most part, they do it on their own. It comes to us, and basically, we vote yes or no on it without really having any oversight. As far as, that's been my experience since I started in January. We just, everything comes to us. And maybe I think that way because I haven't been here long enough to understand everything and comprehend the, the big picture. But the way I feel about this, I just, I just can't support it. There's no way that, you know, the little oversight that exists at this point, I'm just going to be willingly vote yes on it. I just can't support it.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the comments of my colleague, Councilmember Rivas. I am often hesitant to give up discretion as well. I will say two things. I don't think these will change your mind, and they're not intended to. There is always the opportunity for any party to appeal these to the council, so that that pathway still exists if there is concern within the community, if you hear from constituents with concerns. And so I guess one of my questions on that, the appeal process, that's pretty easy, right? I mean, you don't need to get an attorney, you don't need to have like specialized knowledge or anything like that. You just like, hey, I'd like to appeal this. Okay. So we, if there is controversy, we still maintain that on those important issues in the community to take a look at those. The other part of this, and I do look at it from the business perspective, the more certainty we can provide businesses, the better business community we will have. They see the rules. They know that those rules, that's how it's going to be applied, that it's not going to be, oh, you know, we decided we don't actually want to do what our rules say we're going to do. You know, that certainty is absolutely critical for our business community, and this provides more certainty to them. Again, I totally understand what you're saying, and I actually look at it slightly differently. Are we asking too much of our planning commission, you know, because they are a volunteer group that is there? We're the ones that went out there and got elected and said, hey, we want to step and do this. They applied to, so they stepped up to serve the community as well, no doubt about it, but there's sort of a different level of expectation, and are we asking potentially too much of them? The thing that cautions me on that is, everything's going to run through them anyways. It just ends there with their decision unless appealed in most cases, or if it's, and the administrative ones, I, I think we've narrowed that down to the ones that, that just apply the rules, you know. As someone who pulls building permits, I certainly would not want to come before this body to get a building permit for a remodeling project. So, you know, it would not be a good use of anybody's time. So I'm comfortable with where we are. I'm comfortable with the 45, with potentially looking at 57 later. I would say that that 12 is not really 12. There's like, when I read them, there's five, you know, and then there's like nuances of them, like there's, you know, service station, and a gas station, and a fuel station, and, you know, I don't know what the differences are, but, you know, we took all those things out and said, hey, we needed to have more. That's what planning commission did. I support that. I didn't hear anything from staff that said they really, really strongly thought we should do more than that at this point. I think, if I understand correctly, it was we support both of these. So let's, let's go as far as we want to right now, and then, you know, take a look at it again in 15 years and see what we want to do then. Dwayne will still be here.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would say I agree with what the planning commission has sent forward to us as well with the 45. I think that's their indication, that that's what they're comfortable with, and I support that. And I've said this since I started councils, we, we don't, sometimes our relationship with our commissions, not just planning commissions, isn't as strong as I would like. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to strengthen those relationships, because we know here up in council, we only have so many hours in the day. We all have other jobs. If we were all 100% here all the time, it makes sense for us not to give up this and to be involved all the time, but we're not. And that's why we have commissions, and that's what we've asked and tasked them to do, is do the hard work so that we can make the decision up here and streamline it and make it easy. So I think that's a great opportunity for us to continue to strengthen our relationship with the planning commission, knowing that they're tasked with doing the work that we've assigned to them, and making it easier for our businesses to come to City Hall and say, I want to do this. How can I streamline this? Cut my, cut my costs down and open a business in your city. So I'm looking forward to it. And then I also agree with our councilmember Loman, like our focus should be on policy, and I think this helps us move one step forward to policy, to ensure that we're, we're moving in the right direction without being bogged down by all the day-to-day things that we have to do all the time.
Well said. Councilmember Rivas?
I just want to make it clear to, to all of you. I know you all work hard. It's nothing against you in any way whatsoever. I just feel that is, you know, when I think back on how I ran for this position, and I got elected, I figured that a lot of the reasons that I ran was because I was seen on this party, you know, if I may call it that. I might be over, you know, reacting on this, but however, if I really think about it, this is one of the reasons why I'm sitting here right now, is because, you know, oversight, as far as the public goes, and a good majority, I wouldn't say majority, but a good portion of the public out there feels that they're not, as residents, are not getting any say in on this. And I think if we really think about it, and we look deep into this, we got elected for a reason, to represent the people out there, and they gave us the privilege to be sitting here in order for us to be somewhat of a representation of themselves. And, you know, that's, that's the reason that I am giving myself for really not supporting this at all, because, you know, if I, when I decided to run was because I wanted to see more transparency from the city, and the way that things go right now, when you guys do all the work, and I, and again, I am not putting your work and efforts down in any way, because I know it takes a lot of effort to put these things together, right? But at the same time, people out there don't have a clue of what's going on. They don't learn anything until it's presented in this body, and the, the agenda goes out, and then people have access to it, which is when the decisions are being made. And that's the reason why I feel that I, you know, when we're giving this, this up, it's, it's just not a good thing. And it's not a representation of your commission or anything. It's just, just the way I feel about it.
Thank you, Councilmember. So from, from my perspective, counsel, I'm, for a lot of the reasons that were brought up, I'm supportive of the planning commission's recommendation of the 45. And just to be clear, this, what you see in front of you here is the planning commission's recommendation. So, yep, this is the planning commission's recommendation. I do think, I appreciate the work that they've put in on this. I appreciate, we've spent a long time on this. They spent twice as much time as we did on this, talking through these things. So I appreciate the input that they've brought forward, and I appreciate the 45 that they've recommended that we make the change on. I do think that this really does go toward what we're trying to accomplish of reducing time cost complexity, and as Councilmember Nelson said, to increase surety, to definitely know that as people work to put a business plan together and try to work through the machinations of city government, they know what to expect, and I think that there's a lot to that. And so I appreciate that as well. And, and I also will say, just, strong leaders delegate. It's as simple as that, and a good leadership body delegates where appropriate and where necessary, and I think that's what we're doing here. So, counsel, if there are not any other questions, I would look for a motion. Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Absolutely. Thank you. And in the spirit of that, Mr. Mayor, I am, just off the top of my head, more than 80% of the time, we take the recommendation of planning commission anyway, so all that we have done is delayed the yes by 45 days, which is just stupid, right? I think that's what we've all kind of agreed to. So.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Thank you. I move to adopt an ordinance to streamline land use development approvals by expanding administrative approvals of final site and building plans, final development plans, removing the final site and building plan approval requirement for accessory dwelling units and two-family dwellings, designating some uses that are currently conditional as permitted, granting the planning commission authority to approve all conditional use and interim use permits, final development plans without city code flexibility, tent permit extensions, certificates of appropriateness, and variances subject to appeal, and establishing a reasonable accommodation process in the city code, thereby amending chapters 2, 15, 19, 21, and appendix A of the city code.
Second. Motion by Councilmember DeLaSandro, second by Councilmember Mua, to adopt the ordinance to streamline land use development approvals within the city of Bloomington, as stated. No further counsel discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Carter.
Aye.
Mua.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Rivas.
Aye.
DeLaSandro.
Aye, sorry.
And Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Rivas in opposition. Councilmember DeLaSandro, summary publication, please.
Of course. I move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of the ordinance to streamline land use development approvals by expanding the administrative approvals of fight, final site and building plans, final development plans, removing the final site and building plans approval requirement for accessory dwelling units and two-family dwellings, designating some uses that are currently conditional as permitted, granting the planning commission authority to approve all conditional use and interim use permits, final development plans without city code flexibility, tent permit extensions, certificates of appropriateness, and variances subject to appeal, and establishing a reasonable accommodation process in the city code thereby amending chapters 2, 15, 19, 21, and appendix A of the city code.
Second. Motion by Councilmember DeLaSandro, second by Councilmember Mua for summary publication on item 4.4 this evening. No further counsel discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Carter.
Aye.
Mua.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Rivas. DeLaSandro.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Rivas voting in opposition. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank, extend our thanks to the planning commission for their work on this. As I said, I know for the work that we put in, they put in twice as much, if not more, and I appreciate the recommendations they brought back to us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor members.
Counsel, we're going to move on to item 5, our organizational business, and taking a look at the clock on the wall. We are pushing nine o'clock here, and we've got three pretty meaty discussions left. So I will ask the council, and I will ask staff, to make sure that we, make sure that our points are focused and our discussion is relevant as we move forward, to make sure that we get out of here before tomorrow. Item 5.1 is a discussion on the sewer availability charge. Mr. Lundey, our special projects and initiatives guy, and Glenn Markergard, our planning manager, are going to bring this for us. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm not here to talk about a business pitch competition this time. Sean Lundey, Special Projects and Initiatives Manager, I'm here with Glenn Markergard, planning manager with the city of, the Department of Community Development. We are here to talk to you about the sanitary sewer capacity need for funding and a recommendation. Okay, so as a quick overview, we will go over what our pross line and timeline has been up to this point. We will do a recap of the capacity issue, options considered, and community engagement, and then we'll move towards our staff recommendation. So first off, it was early 2024 when we developed a cross-departmental sewer funding working group to think about this issue of needed funding for sewer infrastructure. This incorporated staff from Department of Community Development, Public Works, Finance and Legal. In May, on May 20th, we came to you with an analysis of our sanitary sewer capacity as it stands right now in the city, and potential funding options to consider. We spent the summer engaging with the community and other key stakeholders to receive their feedback on this issue, and we are here tonight in front of you with a recommendation, and, and that's based on landscape analysis and feedback from these key stakeholders. So just briefly, this was presented to you on May 20th, but as a recap of the capacity issue, projected land use changes are expected to generate significantly more wastewater flow than current capacity can handle, and this is resulting in significant infrastructure improvements needs. The map that is pulled up on the screen is a CIP sewer projects map, highlighting the various choke points or friction areas in our sewer system as it stands right now. And as a result, between now and 2021- Um, and as a result, between now and twenty forty, an estimated fifty-four million point not, fifty-four point nine million will be needed to meet these capacity demands. So briefly, this was also presented to you on, on May twentieth, but the options that we have looked at include the impact of no action, of, of choosing nothing right now. Uh, funding through a city sewer avail- availability charge, also known as a SAC fee entirely through that. Funding entirely through an increase in utility fees. We looked at alternate sources. Um, and then some sort of combination of, of the four above. Well, not the first one, so the three above that. And just briefly to go over the, the results of our community engagement conducted, uh, in coordination with, uh, coed. First off, we, uh, conducted outreach to residents. Um, this was primarily done through a Let's Talk Bloomington web, webpage. Uh, the webpage, uh, uh, contained all of, uh, the staff, uh, working groups, documents, research as it related to the funding issue. Um, and pointed in residence if they wanted more information to additional resources. It also had a survey where it posed the question, which do you think is the best way the city should fund improvements to the sanitary sewer system? Uh, we received sixty responses. Uh, forty-eight were residents, twelve were developers. Um, by far and away, the, the top line takeaway was new development should pay its own way for additional sewer needs. Um, you can see a breakdown that's disaggregated to some, some extent. Uh, there's more information we can provide upon request if need be. Uh, we also conducted developer roundtables. Uh, there were two sessions held in August. Um, with a total of thirteen participants. The, the top takeaway is that developers are on board with the need to redevelop the sanitary sewer system. They understand the need for that as it unlocks development. Um, they're not surprised that a city SAC fee is being considered. And they, they want to, us to move forward with addressing this issue. I also wanted to make sure to talk briefly about a racial equity impact assessment. Um, we did this as one assessment, but in two phases. Uh, the first one was done, um, almost exactly a year ago. There was no policy to consider, so it was very top line, but it wanted to help us frame the issue as we got this group together to start thinking about it. Once a policy recommendation was being considered, we, um, reevaluated it and con- conducted another REIA. High-level takeaways are, in terms of equity and environment impacts, it's important to note that maintaining the status quo could lead to impacts downstream as opportunities to build more housing, particularly affordable housing through the HRA would be limited. Um, and housing would either be built in areas of the city that do not have good access to transit. Um, or would be sprawling locations, or they would be built in other commu- communities. Again, so the REIA recommended that we ensure fees do not create an undue burden on residents and that we mitigate the fa- the harm to residents who are at risk of displacement. Uh, this REIA, REIA is available upon request as well. And then finally, I will hand this over to Glenn to talk through our staff recommendation.
Yes. Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. In terms of our staff recommendation, we're recommending moving forward quickly on two key sanitary sewer projects. These are the North Central and South Central projects. We'll talk a little bit more about them. In terms of funding these projects and future projects beyond that, uh, we're recommending, uh, two funding sources. First of all, fees on new development, that would be a city SAC fee. And secondly, increased sanitary sewer user rates. I'll talk a little bit more about each of those. And certainly what we also want to do is continue to aggressively pursue outside funding sources such as state and federal, uh, grants. So one of the funding sources recommended is a city SAC fee or service availability charge. Uh, we're recommending a rate of two thousand and thirty dollars per SAC unit. SAC unit is the equivalent of one, uh, the amount of sewer that one single family home, uh, generates. I would note that city SAC fees are very common, uh, in the metro area and in Minnesota. A lot of our neighboring communities have these in place. Edina, Burnsville, Savage being examples of that. In terms of how we can get to two thousand and thirty dollars, I want to explain that a little bit. So we start with all of the projects that you saw in that, uh, slide earlier and calculate the cost of all those projects. And then, uh, looking at that cost, we determine project by project. What percentage of a individual project is, uh, asset renewal? Uh, in other words, it contributes to the, uh, things that ratepayers would need to cover, even if the capacity never changed. So we get that for every project. And then if we blend all of those rates together, we come to thirty-nine percent. Uh, is the blended rate that would be considered asset renewal. And then the remainder, the theory is, would go to development. That would be development's responsibility over the longer term to cover. So we divide that amount, uh, the sixty-one percent by the amount of SAC units that we're forecasting to be generated over the next fifteen years. And that gets you back to two thousand and thirty dollars per unit. In terms of the utility fee, which would be the other funding source, I want to point out that we are using a more conservative, uh, short-term assumption here. Uh, given the potential that we may see slower development years, uh, early in the funding process. Uh, we've had some, uh, very busy years recently. And we're cognizant that that could slow down and we want to make sure that if we bond for a project, that we're able to, you know, meet our obligations to pay back the bond. So looking back five years, our average SAC production's been six hundred and seventy-two SAC units per year. To minimize the revenue risk that I talked about, we're using a much more conservative assumption. So two hundred and ninety-six SAC units per year, that's six hundred thousand dollars in fees, uh, potentially generated. And then the graph that you see shows what the rate increases would be, uh, without any capacity expansion at all. That's the blue line. Uh, that's just asset preservation. And then the red line is if we have continuous, ongoing period of slower development, what would the maximum rate increases be? Now, if SAC revenue is greater, if we don't have a ongoing slow development, uh, then the future utility rate increases can be lower because you're doing that every year. So in that case, the true rate increases would be somewhere between the red line and the blue line that you see above. In the short term, uh, that cost share, given the conservative approach, uh, would be closer to sixty percent utility fee, forty percent, uh, SAC fee, but that's a short-term, not a long-term situation. So if we think about utility rates, uh, this graph compares Bloomington with other cities. Uh, in terms of utility rates in twenty twenty-four, you can see Bloomington has lower utility rates than a lot of our peer communities. And with this change, certainly utility rates would increase. But we believe they would still be lower than a lot of our peer communities. We know what our increases could be, worst-case scenario. We don't know uh, how these other cities may adjust their fees, say, out to twenty twenty-nine. So, uh, but we do anticipate that Bloomington would be moving to the right on this comparison graphic, uh, maybe somewhere more in the middle. So those are the costs of, uh, of this approach. Both cost on development, cost on ratepayers. But I want to point out there's a lot of benefits as well that need to be considered. Uh, first of all, it allows the community to continue to grow and evolve. Uh, add new housing, new businesses, new services. These are things that residents value. Um, certainly there would be increased economic activity in the city uh, through that additional growth, new employment opportunities, and certainly tax-based growth. Uh, for example, the average, uh, multifamily unit that comes online in Bloomington generates approximately twelve hundred and fifty dollars per year in city property taxes. So that is, uh, lowers the tax burden citywide. In terms of next steps, uh, if that's your direction tonight, what we would do is quickly prepare an ordinance establishing the fee. We would bring that forward for a public hearing. Uh, that could be in the November, December timeframe. Uh, we would also bring before you a, uh, council item to order a feasibility report for that North Central project. I would note that the South Central project, uh, council already ordered a feasibility report on that in, on September sixteenth. So the city SAC fee could go into effect as soon as the ordinance is published. That could be as soon as December. And in terms of our first two sewer projects, we anticipate the South Central project could come online as early as November of twenty twenty-five. And the North Central project, which is a much larger project, uh, more complex, uh, that could come online by November of, uh, twenty twenty-seven. So we do have a recommended motion for you tonight, which is to direct staff to prepare the ordinance and bring it, uh, before you for a public hearing. But before we have, uh, discussion, um, Mr. Lundey and I are available for questions, as are several other staff members.
Thank you, Mr. Lundey, Mr. Markergard, appreciate it. I think there's some of those in Richfield as well, aren't there not?
Large.
That'd be great. Council, uh, questions, discussion? Councilmember Delisandro.
Uh, just a, uh, this is kind of a related question, I guess. Um, the, the timeline you just, uh, articulated around the North Central project, does it, um, does it have a positive or negative impact, um, based on what's happening at the four ninety-four corridor, right? Then, like, is there, is there a, a reason we would do it at one point or another based on the fact that there's a lot of upheaval in that general area right now anyway?
I see Julie Long coming forward.
Oh, he's kidding. I have to bring the engineer. Nerd alert, sorry.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, our original intention was to not tie that to the four ninety-four project. Um, because Mindot is not very good at building utilities like water and sanitary sewer. But I will tell you that this morning I had a meeting with Mindot on the future phase two of the project for four ninety-four. And they indicated, uh, FHWA may want to federalize our sanitary sewer project because it would be within the corridor. Um, but I don't know that answer at the moment.
Okay. It was, it wasn't so much I was, I don't, I agree with you. I don't necessarily want them to do it for us, that's for sure. But, uh, but, you know, if it's, if the ground is already broken and they're in there working, do we have the opportunity? And are we going to try to time it so that we have the opportunity? So we're not going back two months later and digging up the same thing they just dug up, you know, a couple of months ago, that kind of thing.
Um, as you can see from the presentation, we haven't authorized the feasibility study and we would come back to you in November. But my gut tells me that we're not going to open cut that sanitary sewer. We're going to directionally drill it.
Okay.
So it will not probably impact the, um, freeway itself. It will have impacts on local roads.
Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you. I just was kind of curious about that. Um, and whether we were timing it to that. Um, I don't, I think the, um, the only comments I would have are, like, what the, what the charge would be. And, and I think we, we're not really, we're not really asking for feedback on that right now because I think we're bringing that back for public comment. So, um, it, and my only, my only comment there was, um, based on something I don't even think is in this presentation, but, oh, maybe it is. Um, yeah, the rate increase. Well, that's the rate increase, but not the, the SAC charge. There was, was an earlier presentation where we looked at our SAC charge, what we were proposing against other SAC charge fees in the area. And that was what I was, I was wondering if we would be talking about that, I guess, at another point. Cause I don't see it in this presentation. Unless it's in the appendix somewhere. Oh, here we go. It's in the, it's the back. Yeah, there we go. Okay, great. Um, do you want feedback on this? Or maybe I can shut up, I guess, is my point.
No, if, if you have feedback, I mean, you, you'll notice, as councilmember Nelson said, you won't see the city of Bloomington on there, but, uh, if you have feedback for that.
Well, yeah, the, the, the question would be, um, do we feel like we're in alignment with everywhere else? I mean, some people have it at like five K versus some people have it at five hundred. And so I guess the open question I have is, uh, it makes sense based on the way that you described how you came to the conclusion about twenty, two thousand thirty dollars. Like, I completely understand the math. It's not, i- is it, do you actually, let me ask this. In the feedback that we got, specifically from the developers, did they have an opportunity to comment on the number itself or a range of numbers, um, to imply that it is a barrier, it wouldn't be a barrier? It sounds like generally speaking, they feel, they knew it was coming, they kind of feel good about it. They know that they're going to deal with it. They deal with it in other cities. Is the, is any conversation on the number itself, um, been had with those folks?
Yeah, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, in terms of our, uh, development, uh, or meetings with developers, I don't remember specific comments on the number. I think the developers realize it's in range with a lot of other cities. One thing I would point out is that we don't want to set that fee based on what other cities charge. We need to have a methodology.
Yep.
That, uh, does it based on, uh, Bloomington's unique situation. While, but it is good to know, uh, that other cities have these charges and that their rates, you know, range from anywhere, you know, a couple hundred up to five thousand dollars, the ones that we found. But each city would need to look at their own specific circumstance to set that rate.
I understand. The only comment I would make then on that would be, I'm not a hundred percent sure that even though that the, the asset renewal portion is thirty-nine percent, we may want to consider not charging our residential unit, like all of our people, the full thirty-nine percent if we can charge a higher rate on the SAC fee. Is what I'm trying to understand. So if that SAC fee can be three thousand, which means that we're not going to charge, we're only going to charge thirty-five percent or thirty-three percent to the utility rate assessment, that might be better for the overall city of Bloomington. So something to think about. Thanks.
Thank you. And, and I will say, councilmember, it's, those, the, the number is, as, as Glenn laid out, the number is basically what the number is. I mean, it's, it's a specific calculation to, to determine what that impact fee can be. You know, and it relates to the, the, I think the, what is it, nexus? I mean, what's the, what's the official phrase I'm looking for, Ms. Manderscheid?
Uh, Mayor members, the, there's been a fair amount of, uh, legal analysis of this type of body of fees, generally known as impact fees. So the court will look at whether there's statutory authority to, to have such a fee. In this case, uh, there is. Uh, and then the court will look at whether there is an essential nexus, um, between the governmental purpose and the, and, um, the fee being imposed. And then they'll also look at rough proportionality, which is, uh, an individualized assessment and, and a methodology. Um, and, uh, and then the court has started to look at also, um, whether the fee itself, um, constitutes a taking. Um, so we will be considering all of those, um, relevant tests and considerations in coming up with the methodology that we ultimately bring before you to codify, to consider codifying. Uh, and, um, be, you know, taking in the totality of all the considerations that we have before us so that we can not only prepare something that addresses the situation right now, but hopefully in a more long-term, sustainable approach as well.
Okay.
So the, the bottom line is it can't be a, a number, you can't set the number based on some sliding scale where you're hoping to make more off of the developers and less off the residents.
Right.
It has to have a specific, it has to fit within the specific.
So this could actually be lower based on whether or not those conditions are met or not met?
I, I think this was their preliminary number. I think the discussion will continue.
Okay. And w- we will get that back in November.
That's, that's, if we decide to move forward with this, is my understanding is correct, that's part of the, the, uh,
Yeah, I understand.
The public hearing in November.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to follow up on something that, uh, our city attorney just said. I just want to make sure I understood correctly. There is explicit statutory authority for us to have this type of fee because I know there, there have been other fees that other cities have imposed that they did not have that. So, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. Um, was there any consideration of? Was there any consideration of a WAC fee or is that just not necessary because we don't have an issue with the water? And so there wouldn't be a nexus with regards to, or we don't have a, we don't have to add capacity to that part of the system? Is that accurate? Because typically you see these two fees together.
Yes. Mayor Bussi, Councilmember Nelson, there was not discussion at this time on a WAC fee, whether or not that's a possibility down the road. I defer to our Utilities Administrator.
Okay. And it doesn't need to be as part of this, I just, you know, if there are issues with that side of the equation as well, I would suggest we handle them the same way. In terms of federal funding, it was raised that there might be a possibility, my understanding is from the Infrastructure Act, there was funding for utilities and infrastructure for local communities that was particularly tied to those communities that were making specific efforts to allow for more housing. And this is something the city manager has talked about frequently of providing more incentives. I assume those will be looked at, we don't have to get into all the details, and for all I know, that's completely exhausted at this point, but it seems like an opportunity given all the other housing that we have done, housing-related policy, that we may be in a really good position to get that type of funding, hopefully. And then, one of the things that I saw in the packet was that for this, for this water rate, for these, that commercial paid 40% of the sewer and residential paid 60%? And that kind of struck me considering like property taxes, we typically talk about a 50-50 balance. Do we have any other options in addition to or different than this to take a look at those fees like in 10, 15 minutes from now? Because I do think they're later, so I just wanted to bring it up in there because I think it was part of this conversation, am I wrong in understanding that? That, that commercial is paying less than residential?
Mr. Markergard? Or Mr. Lundey? Which one?
Mayor Bussi, I'll need to defer to our Utilities Administrator on that.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, if you could rephrase that question a bit.
How would you like me to rephrase it?
Well, I think, I think what, what you're referring to, water or wastewater rates and the proportion of commercial versus residential, I don't recall seeing it in the presentation.
I can try to find it before we get to the next conversation because it's more pertinent to that.
Okay.
Because this isn't going to impact that part of it, so I'll find it before that.
Mr. Brune?
Mayor, Council, I'll just add in, on the utility rates that you'll see and suggest here, those, they have different rates for commercial and residential. So on the rate piece, that's applying to all commercial and residential, the SAC is just new development. Did that answer your question?
No.
Okay.
But thank you. So, no, I, I get that this is just new development and, and it's specifically there to pay for new infrastructure, just like when all the other development was built, the developer paid for the new infrastructure. And you're segregating out the costs of improvements to the existing, maintenance to the existing, that's the 39%. The 61% is for the new, that's how we get there, that's how this is in compliance with the nexus and the law. I get that part of it, that, that totally makes sense to me and those calculations will be tweaked before November and as we go forward based on actual development and activity. So that part, but there was something that I saw, and this candidly is probably much more pertinent to the next conversation about utility rates.
In the past, I think we've referred to overall water revenue is, is historically come in around a 60-40 split residential to commercial, but that's based just strictly on use and accounts, the rates, they're not paying different rates, it's just a function of where the water is going and who, and who's consuming it.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman, question?
No, I think it's, my question was basically answered, I mean, it wasn't completely answered, but I could, but if we're ready to move this thing, I know we're tight on time, so.
I just had, I did have one more question. As we, as we look at, for the North Central project coming online in 2027 roughly, can develop happening concurrently or does the work need to be done before then development kicks in?
Mr. Mayor, Council, what we would do is, it can, the work can occur concurrently depending on what type of development it is. So we would put a condition on the approval that they cannot get their occup, certificate of occupancy until this sewer project is completed. And we have done that once before over in the South Loop District, the American Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Project and one of the multifamily developments.
And, and to be 100% clear, without that increase, we won't see the development in that North Central. I mean, we're talking the Penn American District and it, it's not going to happen without an increase in SAC capacity.
Correct.
Great, thank you. So with that, Council, if there are no other questions, I would look for action on item 5.1.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Councilmember Lohman?
I'll move to direct staff to take the necessary steps to establish the city sewer availability charge, SAC, consistent with the city council discussion.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Delisandro, to direct staff to take the necessary steps to establish a SAC consistent with the city council discussion this evening. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer?
Carter?
Aye.
Muah?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Rivas?
Aye.
Delisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussi?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you much, we'll look forward to the, to the work and look forward to this continued conversation next month. Item 5.2 on our agenda is the first of our budget discussions, two budget discussions this evening. This is on the utility funds as part of the 2025 budget and rate discussion. Mr. Anderson? Good evening once again. Thanks for your stepping in and providing some answers in the last time and looking forward to the presentation on this one.
Thank you. Good evening again. I'll be here with you to present both the water and wastewater utility budgets, beginning with water, and I'll try to highlight some of the accomplishments of each utility focusing on water quality, infrastructure, renewal, and affordability. So, beginning with strategic investments in water, in, in infrastructure water, in, in processes, treatment methods, and, and personnel from this council and past councils have consistently supported sustainable delivery of safe and high-quality water for the city of Bloomington. I would be remiss if I didn't take advantage of this opportunity to acknowledge the recent Best in Glass Award from the Minnesota Section of the American Waterworks Association. This is the third Best in Glass for the city of Bloomington and is a fun way to recognize and acknowledge the water quality that's produced and distributed here. Similarly, in Bloomington this week, last week, we included an update on the EPA's new lead and copper rule revision, which requires water suppliers to develop a water line materials inventory in an effort to identify lead or certain galvanized materials in both the city portion of that service as well as the private portion. The rule further requires replacement of those services within the next 10 years. What you're looking at is a sample of the state dashboard that, that shows Bloomington's approved inventory of over 33, or close to 33,000 services. What you don't see are any services that require replacement. I, I bring this up for two reasons. One, the, the effort of pulling together an inventory like this relied upon those past investments, whether it was the, the systems that allowed us to capture that data, preserve that data and then be able, and then report that out, as well as the decisions that were made, you know, going back to an ordinance from 1960 requiring copper or better water service lines. Those, those, those code, that code language permit requirements and construction specifications help lead the city to, to this outcome. Additionally, not related specifically to the inventory, but to, to the issue of lead and copper in general, the city's treatment technologies include a corrosion control program that continues today. The, the treatment plant and the Tri-City Lab work hand-in-hand to make sure that the water that leaves the plant, it doesn't, inhibits the potential for any metal materials leaching. So if there were lead present in private plumbing systems or fixtures, that corrosion control program helps prevent that material from leaching into the water. That program will be continuing. We try to communicate this type of, these types of efforts and, and the quality of, of our water through our water quality report, also known as the Community Confidence Report. We work very closely with communications each, each spring to put out this four-page document. It comes out with the June briefing, includes an overview of the city's water supply, the treatment processes, frequently asked questions, updates on significant water quality projects, and most importantly, our water quality results, our laboratory results that, that are taken by the Department of Health that, that demonstrate that continued compliance with the Safe Drinking Affordability, all of this, as we'll talk about in a couple of slides, we'll, we'll get into rates and budgets, but one of the things that, that we know is, is a strong priority of the cities and we've heard from the council, the issue of affordability and equity with regard to our, our rates in drinking water. We have, we have relied upon past published reports from both the American Waterworks Association and Water Environment Federation suggesting that water, water bills that, that are less than 2% to 2.5% of the median household income can be considered affordable. So what we've done in the past, what we've updated here is, is that metric, looking at not only the median household income, but the median income per capita, federal poverty income for a family of four and federal poverty guideline for a single person, looking at that drinking water rate impact. As you can see on this chart, one could argue that, that Bloomington's drinking water is affordable. We know, however, this, this is not the whole story, this doesn't account for nuances, individual behaviors, other stressors that may be occurring. The other thing to note, again, when, when, if a Bloomington resident, we don't, we don't have a water bill in Bloomington, we have a utility bill. And so one of the things that we don't understand, if that utility bill's not paid, was it because of water, wastewater, stormwater, solid waste? So with that in mind, one of the things that, that staff has, has undertaken, a team, a team of staff from utilities, engineering, coed, OREB, finance are working with the U.S. Water Alliance on a affordability task force, along with a couple of community partners, will hopefully be bringing an agreement for council's consideration shortly to kind of formalize that arrangement. That's a two-year project, working alongside cities from across the, the country to identify, you know, one, is there, is there an affordability issue? What is that affordability issue? And then what types of steps can be taken to address that? So just, just an example of, of ways we're trying to make sure that, that, that rates are, rates are affordable and water is, is equitably accessible. I know Councilmember Lohman was waiting for this slide, the rate comparison, I can't resist because it does once again show that Bloomington's water rates for softened water when compared with peer and, and nearby communities remains one of the lowest, remains one of the lowest. In addition, included a graphic that, that kind of outlines, roughly outlines how our water expenditures are handled, with about two-thirds of that going toward distribution, supply and treatment, and purchases from the city of Minneapolis, with about 25% dedicated toward asset renewal and capital projects.
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in there? Scott, can you go back real quickly? Just, I think the council understands what this graphic says, but if there's somebody who's looking at home, can you explain what the red bars are versus the blue and, and the difference between the unsoftened and the softened?
Sure. Mayor, Mayor Bussi, council members, so what we're trying to do here is, is compare like for like. And so Bloomington soft, is a, is a lime softened product at the plant, similar to Minneapolis, Richfield, Eden Prairie, that's what those blue bars are. Those are, are water systems that, that soften at the plant. The red bars with the, with the white on top, those, those are communities that do not soften water. So that water comes to your home, it's, it's harder, it's, it's not as finished. And in most cases, people purchase home softening systems. And so that white bar, that's the cost to home softened water. So at the end of the day, we're trying to compare the same product across the board. So with that, we've got a 2025 budget request, which is consistent with past years and blends operations and maintenance with strategic capital investments. This is a slide of our long-term budget model, paying particular attention to the total working capital balance. We use that to help gauge the overall health of this budget. That, that working capital balance, if you recall, is, is based on, on cash flow for operations, emergency repairs, unscheduled system alterations, capital for the following year, and reserve for future asset renewal. And so for 2025, we're proposing a 3% rate increase, which results to roughly 90 cents a month for that, if you're assuming that 6,000 gallons per month use, which is a little bit high, but also attempts to account for tier, any tier-two use. And with that, I think I'm, can take questions or move on to wastewater?
Council, questions on water before we head to wastewater? Councilmember Lohman?
Thanks for the slide. You got great slides. So then with, with the water rates here, with, with what we had this year, where we had additional, you know, we kind of had a lot of help from Mother Nature, will that impact us in the future years, kind of going out? Or is it just, okay, we had one year where we're over and, and a year of many droughts that we've had?
Mayor Bussi, Councilmember Lohman, we struggle year in and year out to try and guess what Mother Nature is, is going to bring us. If you recall, just last year, we were in a prolonged drought and, and so we sold a lot of water at tier-two. A lot of people watered their lawns and, and did other things. So yes, this year, not as much. In fact, not much at all, although the last month, we've been doing our best to catch up. So I think we, we, we kind of manage those, those peaks and valleys, but as far as, as having a, a long-term impact, I mean, that's, that's where we look at that, that long-term model and, and keep an eye on that working capital balance. We know two things, that revenue will fluctuate from time to time based on, on, on the weather, on climate, and our capital expenditures will fluctuate depending on what project we have planned for any particular year. And so between the two of those, that working capital balance will move a little bit. And and that helps us try to try our best to keep rates at at something that's a little more consistent as opposed to high spikes and.
I appreciate that because I thought we'd we see a higher, a higher number this year, so I appreciate that.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Two quick questions. Is there anything in the data about usage that would lead us to have any type of conversation about the twelve thousand, the tier one, tier two cutoff? Or is that still fairly consistent?
Yeah, that's the, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, that's still fairly consistent. We so last year, we 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 ran an average. If if I can have the overhead and steal a chart from a previous presentation. So this was a comparison of annual winter and summer use. So if you look at the graph on the right, that's your, that's your annual use for commercial, multifamily residential and single family residential with the red bar on top of each of those is that tier two use. So you can see in the, in the, the winter, in the middle there, that's, that's that demonstrates that tier two use. What what we, the conclusion we draw from that is is there's not a lot of tier two use used by properties to to meet those kind of nondiscretional water uses. And that that and the the graph on the right is is basically that's that summer use. That's where that tier two use is coming in. So we're, we're pretty confident on that, on that tier threshold. That has changed over the years from when, when the, when the conservation rate structure was initially established. Boy, I think it was, it might have been close to twenty thousand gallons for that bi monthly period and and has been modified to, again, as I say, make sure that those nondiscretionary needs are able to be met under that tier one with with maybe even, you know, a little extra to to do that outdoor watering or gardening or whatever it may be. But that 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 tier two acts as, as it's intended to to encourage conservation for that nondiscretional outdoor use.
Thank you. Quick follow up on this. Is there a reason why two thousand twenty three is so much lower?
That was, so that was last year's budget presentation. That was, that was, was not a full year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah, I'm sorry for pointing that out. Last question, this is a policy question more than anything, is, you know, would there ever be any consideration of not changing the tier one and tier or two rates by the same percentage? And to push the tier two up a little bit more to keep encouraging that conservation as well as, you know, the reality is, is most people stay within tier one.
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, I think we could, we could look into that in a little more detail. However, because, you know, one of the things that we we try to make sure we do, that the the revenue that's needed to operate the utility, for the most part, is going to rely on that, on that tier one. However, you know, that the tier two revenue does come into play. It's, it's far less predictable, again, based on the weather. So to to try and and really laser point in on that, not sure how beneficial it would be from a revenue perspective.
You risk a big miss if the weather is such that it's rainy and you don't get those revenues. Thank you.
Anything else on water, council? Onward.
Onward. Okay, wastewater utility, I'll start off with this slide. Metropolitan Council Environmental Services, MCS. As you'll see in a, in a slide in a couple of minutes, the largest portion of this utility pays for the the conveyance through the MCS interceptors and ultimate treatment of the city's wastewater at the Seneca Wastewater Treatment Plant. That dark blue or black line, that's, that's the MCS interceptor. Couple of of council on lift stations along the way, and all the green lines are are the city's collection system. Just like in in the water utility, strategic investments on the wastewater side have helped to create a system that collects and conveys wastewater in a safe and uninterrupted manner. We utilize tools like our work order management system and other tools to track preventative maintenance as well as as pay attention to long, as well as utilize a long term capital predictor model to track capital investment aimed at maintaining the collection system while minimizing backups and other failure modes. Sean and Glenn stole my slide earlier, but here's the the wastewater rate comparison. And and again, we're, we're, we're very proud to be able to offer these services at this level for a rate that's that compares very well with our neighbors. And again, similar to the water fund, you can see in terms of the budget allocations, our, our pass through costs MCS along with collections account for about seventy five percent of the of the budget. This is the twenty twenty three budget, and so that asset renewal piece was about eleven percent. And again, as I mentioned, similar to water, that will fluctuate a little bit depending on the scope of 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 the projects that that have, that we have planned out for it for any given year. And then as as was noted in the earlier presentation, these are the capacity improvements that have been identified due to planned or or proposed or projected development totaling almost fifty five million dollars in new infrastructure between now and and twenty forty, again, based on on those projections. And our twenty twenty five budget request, you'll notice the the capital expenditures here are a little bit higher, quite a bit higher than than in twenty twenty four or in twenty twenty three. And that's due to some existing projects in the CIP, one in the South Loop area. And the, the South Central project is currently included in this budget as the feasibility study was ordered, but certainly contingent on on future decisions by the council with regard to to the SAC and things. And then our, we've got two of these. The the long term model for the for the wastewater utility, this one is including the capacity improvement so that South Central Bloomington project as well as the North Central project, which requires a bond sale. This is what what that long term model looks like. And then model not including, if if that's not a direction the council ultimately chooses, this is what I'd say is our, our non SAC model, not, not including those capacity projects. So for twenty twenty five, our proposed wastewater rate increase is three percent. Again, somewhere in the, somewhere between sixty cents to up to a dollar a month for a single family residential customer.
And again, as we get to questions here, you may have stated it, but to to restate it one more time, this is water and wastewater are not moneymakers for the city of Bloomington. The money that is collected go to the operation, the maintenance, the, they go to the system, basically. They go to the production of the water, production and distribution of the water and and the wastewater. This is not a moneymaker for the city of Bloomington.
Correct, correct.
Councilmember Nelson, I didn't see your hand up earlier.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is probably where I should have jumped in with my comments earlier, so. But I did find what I was looking for. So in the presentation about the SAC charges, I think three nineties or three, I don't know, three hundred and seventy something in the packet. I can find it. But it starts off with, it's the discussion of if we use the sanitary sewer utility rate payers to pay for these costs for these improvements. And it ends with the sanitary sewer utility revenue is comprised of both residential and commercial or industrial customers, where roughly sixty percent comes from residential customers and forty percent from commercial or industrial customers. And so that's what I was getting to is is that seemed different than a lot of the other things that we get. I understand it's based on usage. So looking at this slide, my question is, is it possible to have a tiered rate structure for wastewater similar to what we have for water?
So Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, the your wastewater rates are based on your water rates. So the amount of water you use turns into the amount of water that you send. With the exception of summer use, single family residential homes are are billed for their winter usage. So the amount of water that you you're, you're sprinkling, that water's not hitting the sanitary sewer system. So we're not charged, we're, we're trying not to charge you a sewer fee for for that outdoor use. Whereas a commercial industrial customer, they're paying, they pay that full, their water equals their sewer.
And I guess that's kind of my point, is commercial industrial on water pay is all tier two. They pay the same rate as residential on wastewater. But they're paying, and they're, but there is your point that they're paying more because they're paying to water their lawn for summer use or?
No, I'm saying unless unless a commercial account has an irrigation only account, all of the water that a commercial property or account use uses translates into a wastewater fee. We don't use winter usage to calculate a wastewater rate for a commercial customer like we do a residential customer.
And so then that means that they're.
So if they're using water, if 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 Toro doesn't have an irrigation only account and and they water their campus, they're paying sewer on that water.
Okay. So I guess my question is still there that, you know, would it make sense to have a tiered rate structure for higher usage and potentially commercial usage?
Higher, higher sewer flows.
Yeah. So.
So I think and and that's, I think that's one of the potential outcomes of the Water Affordability Task Force is a different rate structure for different customers depending on the type of use, more of a cost of service, capacity, availability kind of charge. Don't know what's a ways out, but I can envision that might be an outcome.
And council member, I think one of the reasons we went tier one, tier two was ultimately with tier two was to try and encourage conservation. And if, if if anyone is, if the water, if the water usage translates into wastewater usage, they are already paying for higher water. You know, they're above six thousand gallons every month, so which means they're paying more for wastewater as well. Does that make sense? So it's kind of, yeah, understood. Councilmember revise.
I just have a question on regards to, since the water usage creates the charge for the sewer water or wastewater in a household as to comparing to a business place. How can a business be paying more? Or I mean, I'm sorry, let me rephrase this. If if the water uses creates a fee for wastewater, right? That's basically what we're talking about right now. And then a hu- a household is is watering the lawn in the summer. That water usage is still being charged as wastewater, even though it's not going into the, into the sewer, right?
No, that, that.
But but hold on one second. Well, how can you identify that that water is not being, it's not going into the sewer? It's just being used on the lawn. This, how can you measure that?
So we we meter the water that's used by by every customer. And so for the purposes of residential sewer billing, we look at their winter water use period and say that's the, that's the amount of water that that ends up in the sewer. Whether regardless of whether it's winter or summer, that's their indoor water use. And so that becomes their sewer bill for the summer.
Council, additional questions? So three percent water, three percent wastewater?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Brian Greedle. I'm the Water Resources Manager here with the city, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the Stormwater Utility Fund tonight.
Brian, could you, could you get a little closer, bring the mic a little bit closer to you? Thank you.
Okay, so Stormwater Utility was founded in nineteen eighty eight. It was the primary mechanism used to fund large infrastructure projects that the city completed as a result of the July nineteen eighty seven storm event, which caused significant flooding across the city. We're also participating in an adaptive level control project was, which is some new technology that can be implemented or retrofitted into existing storm sewer systems to help us control the level of lakes and ponds out there based on the weather forecast. So we're currently working with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District on what it would look like to implement that technology within some storm sewer systems. Scott described the water affordability study, so we're partnering with that as well. I'm not going to go into that in any more detail than Scott already provided. And then as part of our Richfield Bloomington WMO work, partnered with Hennepin County to be out at this South Gate Apartment Complex, working with management out there as well as the residents to bring some meaningful stormwater BMPs as well as stormwater education to the property out there. So that's, that work is currently ongoing. We were one of five cities to pilot this smart salt design. So trying to kind of rephrase how we think about salt reduction out in the environment, trying to bring it more into the design phase. So trying to bring winter drainage kind of on par with how we think about stormwater drainage for spring, summer, and fall conditions. And then we're also currently working with our maintenance crews on a pilot program for enhanced street sweeping. We're currently piloting it in the Penn Lake Watershed, kind of consistent with the Penn Lake plan that has come before council earlier this year. And so just one fall city sweep out there following the guidance from MPCA to, in order to calculate the nutrient removal out there. So one fall sweep through the Penn Lake Watershed resulted in a decrease of forty five pounds of phosphorus coming out of the watershed. So pretty encouraging. So our single family annual rate for twenty twenty four is displayed on the screen. I am Bloomington, we are kind of on the upper portion of the chart there at a hundred and twelve dollars and thirty two cents. For twenty twenty five, we are looking at a five percent rate increase, which is the green bar that's shown on the, on the chart at a hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety four cents. So the twenty twenty five budget request, quite similar to twenty twenty four, slight decrease in expenditures, the capital projects being the largest contributing factor to what goes into the Stormwater Utility Fund. And this is a snapshot of the long term budget model. And so for, again, twenty twenty five, you know, fairly similar to twenty twenty four, twenty twenty six, we have currently programmed some additional capital improvement projects related to the TMDL for Penn Lake as well as working on the Nine Mile Creek project. So that does, so those increase in the capital projects then does, is reflected then in that working capital balance as we spend that down. And so at a five percent rate increase, city's stormwater fee is charged in five different land classification systems that you see on the left side of the chart there. It's on a per acre basis. Every single family residential lot in town is considered one third of an acre, and that's how their cost is calculated. And that's all I have, so I'm happy to take questions if anybody's got one.
Also, questions for Mr. Greedle tonight? Councilmember Alessandro?
Can you, can you describe really quickly, Mr. Greedle, what the capital project for next year is? In the four, I think it's four point four five million. Is that? Is that, can you articulate really quickly what the capital projects are there?
So in the Stormwater Utility, our typical capital projects, one includes asset renewal, which is part of the pavement management program. So the storm sewer is brought up to current standards through the, through the pavement management program. We run two stormwater maintenance projects, one in the summer that addresses stormwater infrastructure across the city that isn't, is not being addressed through PMP or other projects. And then we run a pond maintenance project in the wintertime. So like, we're currently working on the Upper Pond at Bryant, which we were supposed to do last year, but the weather did not cooperate, so we had to postpone that. So hopefully it'll get cold this year, as well as a couple additional ponds that we, that we'll do this year. We typically focus that work in the wintertime because it decreases our environmental impact and decreases the risk since we're working kind of at the end of some storm sewer pipes there. Additional in 2026 would be some water retention projects looking at in the Penn Lake Watershed. There's a couple other ones and I can't recall them off the top of my head.
That's okay. I'm just kind of curious what, off the top of your head, but that was great. Appreciate it. How many of, proportionally speaking, how many of, of Bloomington's lakes, ponds are actually stormwater retention? Are all of them used in that capacity? Are there any that are just natural lakes that we don't mess with?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember, Councilmember DeLaSandro, the bulk majority of them are stormwater ponds. Stormwater wetlands, I guess, as we call them. So I guess, I mean, to elaborate on that a little bit more, when the city was developed, you know, we primarily, you know, piped away drainage from impervious surface to the closest low area without a lot of thought of what the, you know, consequence in the future might be as a result of that. And so that's why the bulk majority of those wetlands and ponds, lakes within town do provide some level of stormwater treatment.
Thanks.
Additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Greedle.
Thanks.
You're going to do our Solid Waste Utility Fund presentation for us, Carrie?
Yes, I am. I am presenting on the Solid Waste Utility on behalf of Solid Waste Program Coordinator, Laura Horner, who is unable to join us, but has graciously prepared all the information for this presentation I'm about to give. So I will start with just a quick overview of the Solid Waste Fund and some recent accomplishments. The Solid Waste Fund includes residential garbage, recycling, organics, yard waste, the bulky item management program, cleanups after major storms, and private property environmental abatements. And organized solid waste collection began in 2016. Organics recycling started in 2020 and currently 30% of households are currently participating in organics recycling. And in 2023, over 2,500 households picked up free compostable bags provided by the city and we hosted a compost giveaway with 880 households attending. The Sustainable Bulky Item Management Program launched fully in 2023, offering monthly bulky item collection for reuse and recycling, and it has been studied by several cities, including, and included in the state's Metro Solid Waste Policy Plan. And the annual recycling drop-off event in September had over 1,000 vehicles in attendance and swap events have also been very well attended. And then also in 2023, the city received statewide recognition, including League of Minnesota City Sustainable City Award and the Chamber of Commerce Innovation and Sustainability Award. And in '24, the city won the Isaac Walton League Public Good Award for Community Engagement and Program Administration. And the Solid Waste Chapter of the city's Climate Action Plan will start in 2025 to guide future programs and policies. So here we have the Solid Waste Budget summarized and you'll see revenues are projected to increase by 2.87% compared to 2024, mainly due to a rise in program income. And this includes residential solid waste fees. Expenditures are expected to decrease by about 10.31% and primarily this is because of the curbside cleanup is in every other year program. So that results in lower costs for '25 since we just did this cleanup in '24. So we do anticipate a positive net result, which is planned for 2025. So revenues are going to be exceeding expenditures by approximately $670,000 and that will be allocated towards that 2026 curbside cleanup. And then we have our slide that shows we are on track to meet the working capital goal for the Solid Waste Fund in the long term. And again, you can see the every other year plan for curbside cleanup expenses. So altogether, garbage and recycling rates are combined here and they include a 3.5% price escalator as per our collection contract. However, there are no increases in the fees for the bulky item management program or the organics recycling. So that's why it's resulting in a weighted average fee increase of 2.6% across the garbage, recycling, organics, and bulky item management. So next, just several factors may influence, may influence future rates. So keep in mind, so for future rate considerations that are coming, our current contract with the Bloomington Hollers expires in June 2026. We are in negotiations with consortium and if unsuccessful, an RFP process for new service providers would begin in December. Negotiations are progressing and will report back to council in two months. Recent contracts in other metro cities show collection price increases due to rising holler costs such as staffing, new trucks, fuel, and disposal. Disposal costs are expected to rise with limited capacity at the HERC and local landfills. We do continue to receive annual SCORE grant funds from Hennepin County, which helps offset rate increases for waste diversion, education, and programs. And following our recent rate study, through call, council amended adopting more aggressive pay-as-you-throw garbage rate and potentially introducing an every-other-week service level in 2026. Those are future things that will be coming. This could encourage residents to reduce garbage and increase recycling and composting, which is aligning with our sustainability goals. All right. So that was solid waste. I guess I'll, I'll pause if there's questions before I go to the next slide.
Councilmember Lomond.
Thank you. And I, and I know you're not, so it's more, more of a comment because I know that we're, we're getting closer, Mayor, to the, the end of our, you know, and 2026 is kind of when we get to that point where, and one of the concerns that we've had in the past is with that curbside cleanup portion of it, that with just the changing of the market and being able to get that worked in to that plan, that we were able to get that into our last plan. I'm just concerned as we kind of move forward into that new contract, that that is going to be almost impossible to try to work that in at the rate that we're, we're getting at and that might be a major driver. I'm just concerned that that might be a driver of, of really lifting that. So I'm just concerned, and I know we've done some work to try to create some ways in which to try to collect similar to, I know some other cities, I think Minneapolis has different ways of, so you can collect it each, each month. So I just, you know, as we're looking at that, I'm just hoping as we can consider that, that we're looking at additional options, you know, maybe it's more than just every two years. I mean, I don't, I don't really want to do that, but I just recognize that that, that one-time pickup is a considerable amount of, and just without having the, the backend loaders and having to go out there. So I just, I just, it's more of a comment than it is really a question and just a concern. So.
And I'm, I'm sure Laura is watching or you'll pass those comments on and I think you're right and it's been ongoing comments and, and I did hear we'd be hearing more in a couple of months here about the contract negotiation, so. Is there anything else, council? All right. You see on the screen in front of you, the, the recap of the proposed 2025 utility rate increases, water and wastewater at 3%, stormwater at 5%, and solid waste at 2.6%. Councilmember Revas.
I'm just thinking in the last five years, what is the percentage, if you know right off, and that the utilities have been increased for the last, last, last five years?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Revas. So I don't know if I have it in the presentation here, let's see. I do. So the, here's what the water rate increases were over the past, since 2019. So a little higher than what we're proposing for '25. There's water.
39%.
And then wastewater. And also stormwater.
So it's about 40% increase in the last five years, right? For your total, yeah. 9, 8, 17, 25? No?
No, I, I.
Oh, I see. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah. Wrong. Still pretty high.
Yeah, no, to be clear, it was, it's not a 40% increase because those numbers do not, you don't add them up to, to get the total percentage increase, so. Any, any questions, any further comments, council?
So I'll just wrap up. This is what's coming. So of course tonight's the preliminary look the council has at what we're proposing for 25 utility rates. And then on the 31st, that is when we would send the rates to the Sun Current for publication. That's their deadline. And then on November 7th, those rates would be published in the Sun Current and on the city's website for public access. And then we would be back November 18th would be, is what we're planning for the official 2025 utility rates public hearing.
All right. I think your next slide says discussion, but we've been discussing this the whole time, so. We're good to go, council? Is there anything else? Very good.
Thank you.
We will move on. I, I wouldn't go far. I think you're featured in this next one, aren't you? Maybe not. Are you just turning this over to, to Kim?
Yes. I'll be, I'll be close by.
Okay. Our next item is item 5.3. It's our budget discussion regarding the Community Development Department. Kim Bergen, the Community Development Director, is here on this conversation for the first time.
Yes, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight just to share the overview of the Community Development Budget for discussion. I'll give you the comparisons between last year and this coming year, or this year and the following year, as well as some details on where we're seeing increases and decreases. And also talk about staffing and some thinking for next year in terms of new initiatives. This is the overview of the Community Development Department's budget. This budget does not include anything for the HRA and the port, which is included in the department. And this focuses on all the city funds associated with the department's activities. As you can see, we are projecting a decrease in revenues by about 14% and then an increase of spending by about 5%. And I'll just go into the details, the breakdown of the budget changes between 2024 and 2025 as proposed. The biggest change is this projected reduction in permanent licensing revenue. And as is typical, I think, for the city, we tend to be a little bit conservative in estimating our permit revenue early in the year and then revisit it again in the fall as you're moving through the budget cycle. As Glenn said earlier, and I'm sure we've been saying for a while here, we all know that the level of activity of construction that we've been seeing over this past five years is very strong. And so just being careful not to overpredict building into next year as things have tightened up some in the building space. I will say, one of the things that Glenn has been saying recently is that the phone's not ringing as much with development activity, people inquiring about development. And so that's an early indicator that people may not make as much investments in terms of new development next year. The other things that you see on this chart are, are going, are projected increases in spending, starting with salaries and benefits. There's no substantial changes to staff, but that is the increase in salaries and benefits for budget, the entire budget. And we also see internal charges going up as you've seen with other departments' budgets. We have some modest increases in training, supplies, and professional services that get us to the 1.2 million. This chart is just a reminder of what comprises the Community Development Department. We have six divisions, the assessing group, the building inspections, environmental health, who you saw tonight, then HRA and port, which I already indicated is not part of this budget presentation tonight, as well as the planners that you see frequently up here. So as I said, there's not substantial changes with staffing this coming year. I did have in here that, and you addressed it tonight with the rental presentation, that if we wanted to continue frequencies the way we have them for the rental program, you could anticipate in future years needing to increase the rental inspection team in order to maintain those frequencies, given the amount of rental housing we've built in the past five to 10 years. And so that's just something to keep in mind as we make plans for the future and we certainly will take your feedback and look at that as part of our analysis for future for those groups. New initiatives, we aren't proposing any substantial new initiatives in the Community Development Department this coming year. I just did want to make a note that some of the strategic initiatives that the city has undertaken this past year, that this is their first year of those programs. We do intend to continue those programs if we can, Hatch Bloom and Bloomington Internship Program and also the Bloomington Economic Partnership. And we are funding those programs in partnership with other funding sources, the Strategic Priorities Fund and also the port. I will share that we might have some staffing discussions around Bloom and Bloomington for next year, so we, there's more to come on that. And then the other thing I'll just preview is that with the conditions that we're seeing parking ramps in, we have a couple parking ramps that have really struggled and haven't been properly maintained. And in thinking about that, I, I think there's been some discussions in the past about implementing a ramp inspections program here at the city. And so just previewing that we are working on drafting up something for your consideration at a future meeting. And then in the area of revenue enhancements, this is the number from option one. I presume maybe that was going to be the proposed, the, the, so I think tonight you adopted option two, which would bring the projected revenue that we would be putting into the budget at, to $287,000. So that's something that currently isn't in the budget as proposed and will work with finance ticket that included now that you have approved those changes to the fees. We also are looking at some fee permit increases, some small increases in permitting and planning, but those are not going to be substantial budget changes, just, you know, it's part of our maintenance of our fee programs. And then as I mentioned, if we do a rental, a ramp inspection program, we would have an associated fee. And then also on this slide is just a reminder that the city has had a long history of pursuing grant money to support different elements of work, so we'll continue to do that. And then my final slide here is just the response to the question around what about potential service reductions. I would say that one of the biggest shifts that the Community Development Department has made has been shifting more services online and that's allowed the city to maintain and provide services, both the way that customers want services and also to be able to kind of do more programs and activities with the same amount of staff or without increasing staffing in a proportionate way. And so we'll continue on that track. That all said, we will continue to provide the walk-in customer service for folks that would prefer to come into City Hall. So the counter is always open. We're continuing to staff the counter for walk-ins. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions you might have about community development.
Thank you very much. Council questions? Oh, there, Councilmember Carter. I was wondering why you were pointing down, Councilmember DeLaSandro. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, so you said that this does not include the port or the HRA budgets? And so then whenever you showed us the detailed breakdown of budget changes, so like salary and benefits increase, that does not include any of the HRA or port staff that you included in that orbit chart, correct?
That's correct. Councilmember Carter?
Okay. And then for the port and the HRA budgets, those will come to us in a couple of council meetings, I assume? And then for the port budget, I guess I'm curious, is that where we'll see some of like the economic development strategic plan that's being created? Will we see any kind of new initiatives or recommendations, proposals reflected in the port budget then?
Mayor and Councilmember Carter, the port and the HRA budgets have already been prepared and provided. And so I don't know if there's plans to present those at the council. I don't think that's been historically what has happened, but certainly if one of the fin- I don't think that's been historically what has happened, but certainly if one of the finance folks want to correct me, we can. But those budgets have already been provided, and I think they were included in a previous packet. And so as far as I know, I don't anticipate the port or the HRA making adjustments to what they've proposed through the process to date.
They were called the HRA, but I guess I didn't recall the port. So can, so when would we, when would there be budget adjustments for whatever's being proposed in the economic development plan?
Mr. Verbrugge, I think can chime in here.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we do bring the port and HRA through the city council because you have to sign off on the levy, right? And so those bodies determine their budget and their expenditures, but the council has to approve the levy. So those will come through, I think we usually do that the first meeting in December. So it'll be end of November, early December when they come through.
Okay. And so then, so then kind of going back to the question, it goes the, my understanding is that the strategic plan for economic development should be done this fall? And we will see, I'm assuming we'll see some budget recommendations related to economic development priorities? And then I guess I'm just curious. Well, yeah, so, so will we see more? I guess I'm wondering about, like, will there be budget impacts based on that plan?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, for the general fund community development budget and what Ms. Bergen's presenting tonight, the, my understanding of what the Port Authority has approved isn't going to affect this budget. And since most of the work related to that economic development strategic plan that'll be coming through will be within the port, that's, that's where those costs will be accounted for. And I don't want to get too ahead of the messaging there, since I wasn't in the port conversation about the budget. I know they're anticipating activities related to the strategic plan, but I don't think that they have specifically identified items because the plan has not been finalized yet.
Okay, thank you, thank you, that's helpful.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. At some point previously, and I don't remember exactly when, we approved a temporary position in community development for an assistant building inspection chief or something of that nature. At the time I asked the question, was that going to become a permanent position? And so now I will ask, did it become a permanent position?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, my understanding of what we have adjusted within the inspections team is there were, there previously were two kind of supervisor positions within that team and the building official, and so we're, we maintained the assistant building official and then reduced, and no longer will refill the, a different titled position. So we have maintained kind of the same staffing count. They've just been adjusted in terms of what the role is.
Okay. I want to just take a look at the specifics of that, just to, because I know that was a concern when we, when we passed it, so. But thank you for that information.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, let me just re-ask the question in a different way. So what I heard Ms. Bergen say is that head count is the same, super, number of supervisors is the same, it's just the specific jobs and the description of the jobs is a little bit different, correct?
That's my understanding. We, we do have one other kind of lower-level supervisor within the team, but there, in the terms of leadership, there's the two positions. We had gone to three and we're back at two leadership roles.
So, so my question is specifically, the same number of people as prior to us approving that, the temporary one? We went, we reduce back to what it had been? Is that accurate?
I'm going to go back and confirm, so we'll follow up with you before I give you that answer, because we have had a lot of moving pieces this year.
That's fair, that's fair, I know there's been some.
But I, I think when you look at the budget here, what you see, though, is a reflection of a hold-the-line on staff. And so when we talked about that previously, you know, working on the staff that had been budgeted for 2024, that's unchanged going into 2025, so.
Councilmember DeLisandro, a question?
I just want to clarify, because I feel like we're dodging the, not on purpose, but we're not answering Councilmember Nelson's question, so I'm going to try to. It was a temporary position. The implication of temporary means that it went away. But if you're carrying it over, it's not gone away. So the question is, did it actually, was it actually a temporary position? Or are you actually carrying it into 2025? Which means it's a longer, either a longer-term temporary position, meaning it's got another year to it, and it's still temporary, or you've made it a permanent position. I think that's what we're asking.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers?
It, it does, and I just want to go back and confirm.
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course.
What we said with the time that we brought it through and where we're at today.
Okay, yeah, totally.
Additional questions? Very good. Thank you much for sticking with us late tonight. So counsel, that is two more of our budget discussions that we have had. Now we've got a number more coming up between now and December, but all are informative, and I think it's, it's definitely time well spent as we go through these each year and try and make sense of it all and come up with the best answer. Moving on to item 5.4, our city council policy and issue update. And I will kick it off, recapping our listening session earlier this evening. We heard from Sally Ness again this week. Ms. Ness has had a concern. Her name appeared in Bloomington Police Department call records back in 2019, a handful of them, and she'd been asking why. And we asked Chief Hodges and the police department if they could answer that question as to why. Chief Hodges responded, he wasn't on the, on the department, obviously, back in 2019. Asked some officers who may have known, and they could not recall. And so the answer to Ms. Ness was that there's no definitive answer. No one could remember or recall exactly why her name appeared in the Bloomington Police call records in 2019. And as Chief Hodges indicated, that was, that was the end of the, that was the end of it. We're, the end of the topic is we, we answered, she asked a question, and we answered the question. And, and that's what we did with this one in particular. We heard from Eric Aaron, and he owns Automotive Related Services, Inc. at 1700 East Old Chocopee Road, and has issues with environmental health and safety. And it was a back and forth as they are part of a conditional use permit, and they have some requirements that they have not met. They have some issues with the standards, both in the, under, in the area and in the yard and in the fenced area and so on. We agreed to continue the discussion because I think there are some unanswered questions, and I think what we want to do is try and get Mr. Aaron and his, and the folks who work with and alongside him, trying to get them to a good, positive outcome here, but it's going to take some work to do so. And so I've asked Mr. Aaron to come back and to reach out for more conversation on all of this. We also heard from Dory Shanigan and Brian Lawler, neighbors to Tommy's Car Wash on Old Chocopee Road. They had some significant concerns about the lights and the noise that come out of the car wash and the operational aspects that are affecting the neighbors. And some of the things that they brought up were, I think, new. I don't think we'd heard before about the lights. We had heard in the past about noise issues. And they also suggested possibly a fence to block some of the lights. And I think that, I don't recall if we talked about a fence during that conversation. I don't recall. So again, that's some more follow-up, I think, for, for Dory and for Brian, and we're going to try and figure out if we can get to a resolution to that one as well. Once again, a couple of new folks talking to us about a couple of different issues. And so that was our listening session for this evening, and, and that's where we are. I do not have anything else to add to the council listening session. Mr. Verbrugge, do you have anything to add?
I do not, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Counsel, do we have anything to bring forward? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Two very, hopefully very quick things. One is just a recap from earlier tonight when we talked about making sure we've made a, put a pin in having a conversation about the legislative agenda, including the notion of support standards for our, our group homes, especially here in Bloomington. I'm very concerned about that. I'm more concerned than I ever have been on that, because we just don't have a point of view on what the standard of care is expected, and, and I don't know what our rules are for helping to enforce that. I mean, obviously, as Ms. Moore mentioned, we have, you know, we have the ability to main, help maintain the building facility, right? But the operations of the, of the services there, you know, we, it's, we're blind to what we can and cannot do there, and that seems disconcerting. So I don't know if that's a, something that the, our Hennepin County folks can help us with or whatever, but I'm hoping we can make that a priority if possible.
I will say, well, first of all, I'll ask Mr. Verbrugge, when are we going to have the discussion about our legislative priorities? Because I know we've got a few other things that go on, might need to go on there as well.
Yep, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, actually, our team that's working on the legislative platform is meeting tomorrow morning, so the timing is good. We'll follow up in conversation tomorrow and then report back on the council, back to the council. We typically bring that in for the platform and the priorities in for discussion latter half of November or early in December, and that's the schedule we're on right now, too.
Okay, the other one.
And I will say, if I could just add also, Councilmember DeLisandro, I was in the, one of the committee, House committee meetings where they discuss this very issue, and it was interesting, the tact they took, because apparently there, there are enough, I won't say a lot, I don't even know the number, but there are enough cities that impose stringent requirements on group homes with the intent of making sure that no group homes can open in their community.
Of course.
And so that was what the legislative intent was, to try and avoid that. But I think, as you said, there are concerns, there's nuance, there's, there's reason, I think, to, to continue to look at this and find the best path forward, because I don't think what we're seeing right now is the best path forward.
It just concerns me that on a day-to-day basis, we don't have any visibility on behalf of our, the residents of, you know, the citizens that live here. We don't have any visibility into their health and welfare. And we, the majority of the complaints that we've heard seem to be coming from a place of, it's not the residents, but it's the people who are managing those properties who are potentially dropping the ball. So it seems like some eyes on that prize should be had, I don't know. Anyway, the other thing I wanted to say was, one of the things I've been thinking about, and maybe we can add this to our agenda item for our, any kind of strategic session we might have in the future potentially, is that I, I've gotten, I've had a number of one- or two-hour conversations with residents. And, and one of the big misperceptions that people have of council is that by the time the public comment happens, we're, we're making a decision on something, right? So the public comment is like part of the last meeting that we've had, but we've had these five or six study sessions sometimes ahead of time, and that's how we get to our decisions. So we're not just blanket-making 7-0 decisions, we're working through the, the discussion prior to it. There's an open question about whether or not we should have some public comment opportunities earlier in the process, so that people can go along for the ride? Because we oftentimes don't have anybody paying attention to our study sessions, and then at the end of the line, when the public comment comes up, there's this big, you know, rigmarole, and people get upset, like, as if it's the first time they've ever heard of it. Well, if we offered a public comment opportunity during study sessions so we could get some of that public feedback earlier on, it might be beneficial to us and also open us up for information that actually could be useful for us to be making some decisions as opposed to hearing something, but for the most part, having our minds made up or having, you know, some surprise happen at the, at the last minute that kind of throws everything off on its schedule, because we've learned some information from interested parties. So throwing that out there, something to maybe put in our strategic conversations about how we might want to continue to add some transparency to that process.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I think that's a good one for maybe like the strategic retreat, strategic planning retreat. I mean, my concern there is that, like, we're already in meetings until 11 o'clock, and so how do we incorporate multiple public hearings into more items, right? It's just like, I don't know, I, I have a concern there, especially when there are other ways for people to engage, like, listening sessions and emailing us and social media and Let's Talk Bloomington and, I don't know. I, so I will say, my, my initial, my initial thought is just like, we've done a lot to increase transparency over the years. I think it's a good idea, but from a timing perspective, I have some concerns. But again, I think that's a good conversation for us to have in our strategic planning retreat.
I agree, it would take some effective agenda management to make sure we can get all this in. I would agree. There's, there's that, too. Yep. Councilmember Lohman. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, just as a reminder to folks, when you're not, when you don't have your mic on, I can't, nobody can hear you, so just. It's a good reminder for me being online tonight, because anytime anything is said without the mic on, I can't.
Sorry, Councilmember, mine, mine was, that was just me being snarky, so it wasn't worth you hearing, I promise. It was just a sidebar, yeah, sorry.
We've forgotten all those lessons we learned during COVID.
Councilmember Lohman.
Just in jest, Councilmember Carter, you know, we always could expand the hours of our meetings, you know, like we used to have in the past. I just wanted to say one thing in seriousness, just to remind folks to, to get out and vote. And then, you know, earlier, Councilmember Revas, I just wanted to mention that in past councils, your point of view about planning, people had that same on this, on this, I just want to make, make sure you understand that there's a history of that, of folks not wanting to give, give that up, because a lot of folks had a planning background, so. Just wanted to just let you know that there's a history to that, so.
Is there anything else, counsel? Seeing nothing, we have completed our agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember Revas to adjourn this evening. No further discussion, Ms. Mercer.
Carter.
Aye.
Mua.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Revas. DeLisandro. Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0, we are adjourned this evening. Thanks much, counsel, for your work tonight, thanks for the staff, and thanks to everybody who stuck it out with us online, watching or participating this evening. Everybody have a great Tuesday.